And welcome to the Bridgewater Township Planning Board regular meeting for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. On February 7th, 2024, proper notice was sent to the Courier News and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk at the Township of Bridgewater, and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Please be aware of the planning board policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 PM, and no new testimony will be taken after 10 o'clock PM. Hearing assistance is available upon request. Accommodation will be made for individuals with a disability pursuant to the American with Disabilities Act, or ADA, provided the individual with the disability provides 48 hours' advance notice to the Planning Department Secretary before the public meeting. However, if the individual should require special equipment or services, such as a cart transcriber, seven days' advance notice excluding weekends and holidays may be necessary. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
Oh, I, for the public's knowledge, our board secretary has been temporarily hung up, so Ashley Sikora will be the acting secretary.
Thank you, Board Attorney, Mr. Peck. Ms. Sikora could have a roll call, please.
Sure. Chairman Vasio.
Here.
Mayor Munch absent. Councilman Kirsch.
Here.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Magura.
Here.
Mr. Wang.
Here.
Ms. Sikora, let's be here. Mr. Benga.
Here.
Ms. Chertowitz.
Here.
Mr. Chowdhury.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Here.
Mark Peck.
Here.
Bill Burr.
Here.
And Catherine Sarmant.
Here.
I believe we have a quorum.
Yep.
At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to any members of the public wishing to address the board on any land use matter other than any application that will be heard on tonight's agenda. Please feel free to come forward at this time. Seeing none, hearing none, we're going to move on. We will be moving the resolutions to the end of this agenda this evening. We're going to be moving straight into our land development applications portion for the evening.
Should we do the minutes?
We don't have minutes this evening. I believe they are still, yes. No problem. Okay, the first application this evening is Haas Hula, Block 150 Lots 12 and 13, commonly known as 147 Chestnut Street. And who's returning to represent the applicant this evening?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, members of the public, board professionals. My name is Michael Silbert. I'm an attorney at the law firm DeFrancesco Bateman located in Warren Township, New Jersey, and I have the privilege of representing Ms. Hula Haas' connection with this application.
Good evening, Mr. Silber.
Just as a, as a quick refresher, the application concerns property located at Block 150, Lots 12 and 13, as shown in the township's tax maps, more commonly known as 147 Chestnut Street, properties located in the township's R10 zone. We are here to request variance relief in order to construct a single-family dwelling on Lot 12. Ordinarily, as this board, I'm sure, recalls, this type of simple residential application would go to the zoning board. However, we're seeking subdivision approval because existing lots 12 and 13 are undersized lots. They are adjacent to one another, and they are under common ownership. So while they've always been considered in the eyes of the township as two lots, lots 12 and 13 as a matter of law have merged under what we discussed at the, I think it was April 16th, the doctrine of merger. So what does this mean? Well, this means without formal subdivision approval. And again, despite the township's continued treatment of the property as two lots, the applicant may not sell Lot 12 and 13 individually without first obtaining subdivision approval from the planning board. So just to sum this up, the applicant wants to formally recreate lots 12 and 13 so that they can be protected from the doctrine of merger. The applicant also wishes to construct a single-family dwelling on Lot 12 for which C variance relief is required for the setbacks. This application does not seek to exacerbate any of the existing nonconformities with respect to existing lots, or existing Lot 13. And in fact, some of the relief being sought with respect to Lot 13 constitutes improvements to existing conditions, which I would just like to clarify before I pass the baton to Mr. Stires. At the conclusion of last hearing, and as I'm sure the board recalls, the board asked the applicant to better address the drainage concerns on the property. Specifically, Mr. Burr and the board asked that we do some site reconnaissance work to try to evaluate whether there are drainage issues, and if so, where they, they may stem from or originate from. Mr. Stires will address this in his testimony. With respect to Lot 12, we also submitted revised plans based upon Councilman Kirsch's request that we conceptually demonstrate what Lot 12 would look like if lot coverage was increased potentially to its maximum permitted amount, if in the future a homeowner were to own that property. If the board recalls, we were originally at 29% lot coverage on Lot 12, where 35% is permitted, and Mr., our Councilman Kirsch wanted to see what it'd be like if a homeowner was there and really utilized it and added its, that homeowner's personal touch to the property. So what we did there on Lot 12 is we added decks, patios, shed. Mr. Stires will address all of that. In those same plans, and on Lot 13, we revised the plans to show the elimination of the existing garage. So what this does, the elimination of the, of the existing garage on Lot 13, and the proposed development on Lot 12 brings the total coverage between the two lots to a number that is almost identical to what exists today as it relates to lot coverage. So the applicant is prepared to remove the existing garage on Lot 13. Just as a reminder, that garage has been there for approximately 50-plus years, and the applicant's doing that to address the board's concerns with, with respect to lot coverage. But with the caveat, and, and you know, I want to make sure it's clear that the applicant's willing to do this if this is really the only path forward to securing an approval. I want to impress upon the board that this is, of course, is not the applicant's preferred course of action. So we're, we're hopeful the board might be willing to, to consider other options to reduce lot coverage. Ultimately, what Mr. Stires has testified to, and presumably will continue to testify to, is that the difference in anywhere between 800 and 1,000 square feet of lot coverage between the two lots will have a de minimis impact on the surrounding neighborhood. So. So just to be clear, the current plans before the board do show the removal of the garage, but the applicant still impresses upon the board that they, they wish not to remove the garage. So I do hope that the, that the submission of these revised plans demonstrates the applicant, applicant's willingness to work with the board, even though the applicant is firm in its, its position. They are willing to work with the board, given the feedback that we've received. We also submitted an exhibit to demonstrate that the single-family dwelling on Lot 12 will comply with the township's height requirements. And I'll just put forth on the record once again, make it very clear that the applicant stipulates to complying to the township's ordinance as it relates to height and FAR requirements for both lots. As was requested by the board, we submitted pictures of the existing basement on Lot 13 just to demonstrate that the applicant correctly did not include the basement in its FAR calculations. So the pictures in what's been submitted to the board shows that the basement's unfinished, used for storage, you know, your standard unfinished basement. Also, as a matter of transparency, just because the topic came up at the last hearing, the applicant submitted interior pictures of the existing garage on Lot 13, again, to demonstrate that it's purely being used as a garage, not, not being used in a, in, at least what I would characterize as an inappropriate manner. So I'll, hats off to my team. They were able to incredibly submit all these exhibits 10 days in advance of tonight's hearing. So again, April 16th, we got these, was our last hearing, we got these exhibits in, I think, on the 24th or 25th. So good work to the team. So before I call my first witness and yield the floor to Mr. Stires, there, just one thing I wanted to clarify, which I unfortunately failed to address at the last hearing. So the last hearing, I indicated in the initial plan submission, as I'm sure the board recalls, that the, that the lot coverage on Lot 13 would improve as a result of the shed's elimination. And I think there is a misunderstanding on my part, because I think the board interpreted what I said. What I thought I had said was that there is going to be an elimination of the encroachment of the shed on the neighbor's property. And I, perhaps the, maybe I wasn't clear, but what I wanted to, to clarify in the record is that I, I did not mean to suggest that the shed was going to be just removed, that the, the shed was going to be removed in conjunction with the application. So if not for the application, the shed was going to be located so as to not encroach on the neighbor's property. That issue was brought to light when we submitted the application, but the applicant spoke to me after the hearing and wanted to make sure that I put that clearly on the record, that, that wasn't the applicant's intention. I say that because lot coverage concerns were, were a major issue at the last hearing, and I just want to make sure that I, I didn't misconvey any messages. So just as it relates to the, to the, to the encroachment of the shed, I think our professionals will attest to the fact that there are, for whatever reason, encroachments all throughout Bradley Gardens. It seems like there's sheds on a lot of properties. So my point is, this doesn't seem like an uncommon issue in this neighborhood, but.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, so the shed will be, have a limited relocation, is what you're saying?
Yes. What I'm saying is.
Entirely on the subject property, not overhanging into the neighbor's property?
That's correct. What I, what I meant to say, if I did not at the last hearing, is that the encroachment will be eliminated by locating, by relocating the shed on the property, irrespective of this application, that they're, they're mutually exclusive from one another. However, because of this application, because we're trying to reduce lot coverage, the proposal was to just eliminate the shed in its entirety. But, but if not for the application, the applicant would not have touched the shed. Now that it came to light that it's encroaching on the neighbor's property, of course, they have to take care of that. They don't want, they don't want to have this encroachment any further.
And is that shed on, on a payout of any kind, or the floor is whatever is part of the construction of the, of the shed?
I have to defer that to.
Okay, all right. At some point, I'd just like clarity there, and, you know, you know, not to, to, you know, be too precise, but I know we want to be precise here. By moving the shed to its rightful location, by probably a handful of square feet, it may be more coverage, because a certain amount of the shed is now in the neighbor's yard. Is that, I mean, you know, we're probably talking about a, a handful of square feet. But you know, whatever is encroaching onto the neighbor, I presume is not being counted currently, but would need to be counted in the new condition.
I'd, again, I'd have to defer to Mr. Stires to see if the, if the entire square footage of the shed was calculated. It's very possible that it was.
Oh, okay. If it was, then, 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 okay.
The shed only remains if the application's denied.
Okay.
It's, I, it sounds as though I'm making like a threat that we're going to keep the shed there. It's just, it's just that I misspoke at the last hearing. It, the, it was presented that, oh, it really isn't an improvement. The shed is going away anyway.
Okay.
I'm trying to just clarify that that was not what I was trying to.
All right, no, it's understood. And I'm sure we'll get to this, but I, I just want to make sure that I understand at this moment, the proposal, if, if the board continues to be concerned about lot coverage and the existing garage is eliminated, the shed is also eliminated?
No, the, the revised plans show the relocation of the shed, as Mr. Stires can, can.
Okay, all right. I, I just, I just want to be, be, be clear, like, what, what stays and what goes, or what moves? And, you know, you know, just because there are some moving parts here.
Yeah.
And, and you know, you know, my position, I'm sure this would be the homeowner's position, we want to make sure that everybody has sufficient space to store your recyclables, your snow blower, if you have one, shovels, lawn mower, those sorts of things. And whether people to choose to do that in a garage, or choose to do that in a shed, clearly, they need to go somewhere.
That's exactly why the revised plans we submitted show a shed on Lot 13 to replace the garage. Again, very, very well received from you councilmen, was the concern that, okay, you're showing this on a plan, but when there's a future homeowner, whether it's a year down the road, or 15 years down the road, they're obviously going to make improvements to the property. So we wanted to show what could be done in accordance with the permitted max coverage. So.
Thank you.
I can recall my, my first witness, Mr. Stires, was sworn in at the last hearing.
Is this on? Yep.
All right. So why don't we start off with, with what was submitted to the board 10 days in advance of tonight's hearing? More than 10 days in advance. What's the new proposal?
Okay. I do have, I don't recall the exhibit number from the last meeting.
I think it was A1, if it was the colorized.
The colorized plan.
I'm going to relabel this one as A1 as well. It's the same thing, but I haven't, I haven't, because I, I think, I think Nancy has the, the previous one. So the plan before you, which I'm calling A1, was the colored rendering of the grading and soil erosion plan, originally submitted. So you see the original house. You had the steps out the back, the porch, the driveway. On Lot 13, you had the existing driveway, existing house, patio, existing garage. We, removing various items. What I've done is made an overlay.
Overlay will be A2.
Okay.
No, A3.
A3.
So what I did was I made the overlay to try, try and show what we've incorporated. One of the things was, as Mike said, Councilman Kirsch, he wanted to see kind of the full development, I guess you could say, of Lot 12. So what, in addition, so the driveway itself is to stay, the porch, the pet, um, the steps, the pet porch house. What we've done in the back is we've added a, a deck in the back. We've added stairs down to the basement, so you have an external entrance into the basement. We've also included, I believe it's 10 by 15 shed in the back with the appropriate setbacks to the, to the, both the side and rear yard. And on this plan, as we said, the removal of the existing garage on Lot 12. And then this shed here would be the relocation of the existing shed to a permitted location. So that kind of shows the full development of the property, and it also incorporates what we felt were the most productive drainage measures, I guess you could say. We can, we looked at whether to put dry wells in or not. We did actually go onto the site, and we did a test pit in this location. Just one, to determine kind of what the soils were, but more importantly, where the groundwater elevation would be. When we dug the hole, water did come in at a certain elevation, and then became static at, at a certain elevation. So we obtained that elevation where it became static, and then we used that elevation to reset the vertical location of the proposed house. So the basement for the new house would be two feet above that elevation. So what that does is it gets not only the basement out of the potential groundwater, but also the sun pump. So that sun pump should not run continuously as the neighbors have expressed on other lots. In conjunction with that, I think all of you should have gotten my response letter with these things outlined. So in response to that, we also generated a, in the letter, there's an elevation of the house, and it shows the various elevations of the first floor, the second floor, the peak of the house, and then ultimately back down to the ground elevation, to document that the house is 32 and a half feet high, as we have proposed, which is below the 35-foot maximum. With regards to the drainage, we decided to remove the garage. That ultimately ends up being a net 32, or 82 square feet increase in the overall impervious coverage of both lots, which is essentially as a, if you're doing drainage, that's, that's, it's equating to the existing conditions. The last thing that we did was we investigated, if remember, we were asking about the drainage structures going off the property. So we have a drainage pipe on the north side of the property, and then we speculated that it did, it continued down to the south and then to the east. So if you recall, we couldn't go on the property, but we looked over the fence. So we looked over the fence, and we made observations. These are all plus or minus numbers as far as the locations, but we feel that they're pretty accurate. And what we determined was that there is an inlet in this northeast corner. There is an inlet, right, essentially behind the garage, the shed. And then what those two are connected, and then it goes to the property, or the roadway to the, to the east. It should be noted, the inlet that we found here was essentially covered up. So we found the, the perimeter of it, but we could not physically locate it because it was covered by various materials. It also should be noted that there is a patio in this location that appears to be within the 20-foot drainage easement. In the inlet, directly behind the shed, on the adjacent property, there is a shed that is right in front of the inlet, which is also within the drainage easement. All of these, I would expect, are impacting the drainage in this area. We did not go onto the property, we did make these observations. It was brought out that there was a eight-inch PVC pipe draining into the inlet that is behind the shed in this location here. We did observe that. It appears to be heading in the direction onto our property, and it appears that it's collecting the roof leaders from the garage, because the roof leaders on the side of the garage go into the ground, and just kind of doing the math. And we did put water into the leaders, and they did discharge into the, into the inlet. So I believe that this pipe was there prior to the development of this property, because prior to the development, the subdivision of this property, there was a ditch that essentially went from northwest to southeast. And I believe what happened was, when they developed the property, created the necessary drainage easements, and, and then put in the drainage structures, they incorporated the pipe into the drainage structure and put it so that it drains to the, the roadway to the east.
Just so unclear for, for my notes, those inlets are on the neighboring properties?
Yes.
But very close to the property line?
Correct. And they are ultimately in the borough of Raritan as well.
They're in Raritan.
Yes, so the, the rear property line is the common line between Bridgewater and Raritan. So I, I think in summary, I think we've accomplished all the concerns that the board had from the last meeting. Hopefully, you know, Councilman Kirsch, we've accomplished your concerns. As well, I think, Mr. Pappas, you brought up some of the concerns about the drainage as well. So I think that we have addressed these items. What, if there's any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I could ask a couple questions. So what's the, what's the, on this plan, what's the proposed lot coverage on Lot 12 and on Lot 13?
Lot 12, as shown, would be 31 and a half percent. And on Lot 13, as shown, would be 45.4%.
So for, for Lot 12, there's still room for further improvements without encroaching in, in lot coverage?
Yes.
Okay. And then obviously Lot 13 is a substantial improvement versus what exists now?
Yes.
And if you were to combine the two lots with these improvements, they'd be almost identical to the lot coverage that's on the property currently?
Yes.
Okay. Couple questions. So at the last hearing, you testified that you didn't think that there were, you personally didn't have drainage concerns with an increase, and I'm going back to the original submission, you didn't have, you didn't have concerns with an increase of anywhere between 800 and 1,000 square feet of lot coverage. That you weren't concerned about drainage issues for lots 12 and 13 based on the original submission?
No, because if you get into 800 square feet, when you do the computations, you convert to acres. And 800 square feet is what, two tenths or two hundredths of an acre? So when you do that multiplication. So when you do that multiplication, the flow increase is negligible, I'll put it that way.
And so you prepared these plans, obviously, based upon the feedback from the board, but in your professional engineering opinion, do you feel that it's absolutely necessary to eliminate the existing garage to address drainage concerns, which, correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying you didn't have any drainage concerns?
I mean, delete the garage would be a net increase of about 800 square feet, so yes.
But the net increase, in your opinion, wouldn't result in
I don't believe so.
Measurable drainage concerns?
No.
Okay. Let's talk a little bit about the surrounding neighborhood. Would you say it's uncharacteristic of the properties in this neighborhood to have lot coverage issues? Generally speaking, I'm not asking you to speak to any specific lots, but in your observations, would you, and our planner will address this, but would you say that that's, that's a common theme in this neighborhood?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. So if there are lot coverage issues on a number of nearby lots, would you say that could obviously impact drainage concerns in the neighborhood?
Obviously, yes.
Okay. Nothing, nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Stires. Thanks, Mrs. Silber. I'd look, I'd like to open up to the board for any questions regarding his testimony.
If no one else has a question, Mr. Chairman, I have a few. First of all, thank you for the, for the work in the intervening couple of weeks. The first floor of this proposed new house will be at elevation 85.5, correct?
Yes.
Do you know what the elevation is of the street itself? And the reason I'm asking, I'm not trying to make this into a quiz show, you know, I'm trying to understand, you know, will the lawn be relatively flat? Will there be, you know, typically, there's at least a little bit of a crown, but, you know, will it be, you know, a pronounced height above the street?
It is approximately, right in front of the house is approximately 80.5. So your, the actual finished floor of the house would be five feet higher.
About five feet, and it looks like, if this is accurate, there's like a two-step, two steps up to the porch, so, you know, maybe that's about, what, between 18 and 24 inches probably, right?
Yeah, there's probably more steps than that. I mean, I would say you most likely would step down out of the house onto the porch, which would be roughly
Oh, yet another step? Okay, so, so, all right.
So getting down to the ground itself would be, if you see, there's a spot elevation of 81 right at the bottom of the steps. So there's three feet down from the porch down to the
Okay. So, so then this front lawn would be relatively flat?
Yeah, it probably has a 2 percent
A, a, a limit, it wouldn't, it would have a limited crown, if I'm using the right phrase?
Right.
Okay. Do you know the height of the first floor of lot 13?
It's a little bit tough to read.
Okay. Again, the reason I'm asking, I'm not, I'm not trying to turn this into, you know, into, you know, a mathematical exercise. I'm trying to just understand, you know, how high is this going to be? I certainly applaud the efforts to keep the basement floor above the, the water table. I think ultimately, if this house is to be built, that would keep the use of the sump pump to a relative minimum, and then even more water isn't getting discharged. So do you, do you have a calculation or an estimate of the first floor of the existing, the house on existing lot 13?
It looks like it's about 86, so it's actually a little bit higher.
Eighty, so, but very, very close?
Yeah.
Okay. So these houses next to each other will look to be pretty proportional?
Yes.
And, 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 you know, six inches plus or minus look to be at pretty much the same elevation and, and pretty much the same, the same grade on both front lawns?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Going back to your comment, the proposed building on lot 12 would make that coverage 31.5, lot 13, 45.4, but the combined, I think you said, was very, very close to the existing condition. When we say the existing condition, we mean with the, with the pool or the remains of the pool that's in the back?
Yeah, really what's left is that the patio around what used to be the pool?
Okay.
Pool itself is gravel right now, so we did not count that.
Okay.
We counted, if there's residual patio area, and then in the upper northeast corner, there's like a little, a patio where there was a fire pit. So that stuff is all coming out, so. And then the, the net 82 square feet that I was saying, that's if we took the garage off.
Okay. So subtract the garage, subtract the items that are going to no longer be on lot 12, add the house, you're at a minus 82 feet of coverage.
The house and the, and the shed in the back.
And the shed and all the things associated with the house?
Yes.
You're at a minus 82?
Plus 82.
I'm sorry.
Plus 82.
From the current condition?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's now over two lots, which is basically 100 by 140 or whatever, whatever the depth is, I think it was, right?
On average, yeah, 130 by 100 total.
And so, so you're suggesting that this 82, as a percentage of 130 by 100, is, is quite small?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Stires, could you elaborate a little bit more on the fact that I think you were, used the word negligible to describe the impact of the water conditions? I, I remember that word, and maybe you could repeat for me the context of how you used that.
You want it in actual numbers?
If you want, but, you know, perhaps not, perhaps not. You could just describe again what you were outlining before, please.
For a 100-year storm, that would probably equate to .1 CFS.
CFS?
Cubic feet.
Okay. And I guess this is a more philosophical or general question for you, Mr. Stires, and would want maybe Mr. Burr to comment. I guess, you know, different people could assign an adjective negligible or not, but I guess my concern is if there are numerous negligible scenarios, then at what point does, how many negligible scenarios then become an issue for a neighborhood, in your professional opinion?
It all depends on the facilities that are accepting the drainage. As I said, you know, the, the inlets that are adjacent to this property are not functioning as they were supposed to be. I mean, that, that one inlet in the northeast corner is completely covered. I mean, we barely saw the frame, let alone the inlet itself. So they all play into things. The other question, since we didn't see inside the inlet, and the inlet is covered with debris and what have you, what is in the inlet that could be compromising the pipes? So it's a bit of a loaded question, and it, you know, and Bill can probably concur with this, drainage is not a linear thing. It's, it's, there's a lot involved in it, there's a lot of different characteristics, and, you know, obviously, impervious coverage is one of the big ones. But also the ability, the size of the pipes and the ability of the pipes to handle the drainage is another significant item in that question.
The reason I think you understand why I'm raising a question, because I've talked about this other applications, rain conditions are different than they were 20 years ago, it seems. The 100-year storms are occurring much more frequently than every century, and the more quote-unquote negligible scenarios we permit compounds the challenge. And, you know, I, I just think that, that, that's a real issue for me. I don't know if you've been able to adequately address it, we're still not finished with the hearing, but I guess one other question. If this was not approved, this application was not approved, and the lot coverage didn't increase with the addition of another structure, what, what does that do to the drainage, stormwater drainage in that neighborhood?
It's hard to say, but I think the other thing is that I was, you know, like Bill mentioned in the last, last hearing, was that, you know, to investigate potentially using dry wells. I'm not a big fan of dry wells. They're, you know, they're basically a hole in the ground and everybody just forgets about them. I was the one that pushed for the removal of the garage, because if we put the dry wells in, we most likely could keep the garage, and it would be probably a net wash. But the advantage of the dry wells, you know, I don't, there's not many of them in Bridgewater, and I think there's a reason for that. But I think honestly that the best solution would be to remove the garage, because you're at a net zero essentially.
Or, or not have a second structure. And that's another scenario here. It is.
Yeah, but
So that's a statement, I guess, more than a comment, a question, so. I'm sorry, complete your statement, I interrupted you.
Yeah, but I think that the net, I think there would be a net benefit if the garage were removed, and even with the new structure.
One, one, one last question about the water table. How, you mentioned that you dug a hole and water filled the hole, and then there was a static level? How many, what, what distance was that from the surface of the
I think it was approximately six and 1/2 feet down.
Thank you, that's all I have now, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, Chairman?
Please, Mr. Choudry.
Sure, thank you. Maybe it's a, it's a question to the Bill Burr also. So basically, if the inlet is already covered by debris, who is responsible for cleaning up that one? Because, you know, that always will create problem for, whether it is neighbors or you or anybody else. That's my first question. Do, Catherine, do you know who, who is responsible for cleaning the debris for the inlet, it's inlet is block on the northwest, northeast side?
Within the drainage easement?
Yes.
On the Raritan Borough side, it's typically the homeowner's responsibility.
Okay.
It depends how the language of the easement is written. It's typically the homeowner's responsibility, but normally, there's language that states the municipality has the right to enter the easement, to make improvements, or to clean or to clear out non-functional drainage. Normally, the first responsibility is the, the individual property owners, but without, without having the actual easement in front of me, I don't know if this one differs, but that's typical.
Because it looks like that this is actually just by the side of their property, but it actually goes, touches the, all the two neighbors' property.
Yeah, this, this is an interesting one, because the drainage easement, it starts in Bridgewater Township, and as it heads east downstream, it crosses over into the adjacent municipality of Raritan. But it's all part of the same drainage system or drainage feature.
Right.
So it does cross the municipal boundary, but, you know, in this case, I, I would suspect that the property owner in Bridgewater is responsible for the infrastructure on their property, and then as it crosses into Raritan, that property owner is responsible. Again, unless the deed or the easement specifies different language, that's typically how it is.
Thank you. My second, second question is, you mentioned that there's at least, you know, inlet is just the future shade, side of the future shade, right? I mean, the one is the inlet, yeah, right there, go, yeah, right, yeah.
There's an inlet approximately right here.
Okay, so in that case, that means the neighbor's water should come in and
It's all going
It goes that way.
Yeah, all the water is going this way.
Yeah, because last hearing, I think neighbors complained about some of the waters goes there. So you're, basically, you're telling that all the water will be going down and go to the Raritan Borough.
Right. So as you come up Chestnut, from south to north, it drains from south to north.
That's it, okay.
And then beyond, north of our property line, it drains from north to south. So this is the low point. So it essentially gets to here and then comes this way.
This way.
And then as far as piping is concerned, it drains from this inlet to this inlet to this inlet, and then down to the road. I, I, the name is escaping me, but the road down to the east, which is in the borough of Raritan.
Basically, you have no control about that one, or do you?
Correct.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's downstream and also off our property and not in our town. So it's, it's, as Bill said, it's a little bit complicated.
No problem. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Stires, tagging on to Mr. Pappas' question before regarding the test pit, thank you very much, by the way, you know, in the last two weeks, for having put that in for us. You just testified the test pit was roughly six and 1/2 feet deep?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the test pit was deeper, the water ended up at six and 1/2 feet.
Water ended up six and 1/2?
I think we were approximately eight feet deep.
Okay.
And then the water came in approximately like foot, foot and a half, but it stopped at that, that elevation.
Okay. A question for Mr. Burr. According to Bridgewater, right, would we classify that as a moderate, a moderately high or a high water table, if that is the water table?
It's a pretty shallow, it's a pretty shallow groundwater elevation, especially when you're considering constructing a new dwelling or structure, which is part of the reason why I think Craig testified that as a result of that, they had to raise the basement elevation. So I would say that's very, fairly shallow.
Fairly shallow, okay. And, Mr. Stires, I believe you have in your report that it will be, essentially, the slab will be two feet above that elevation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions regarding the overall drainage on the site. On the plans, going back to the garage there, there is a, that 8-inch PVC that's shown to, I believe, the north of the garage and west of the garage.
It is in, approximate, right, so north, it goes along the norly side of it.
I see two pipes within the plans that show that there's a PVC pipe that, on the north side of the garage, it looks like it, I'm not sure what it's doing there, I'm trying to understand what these pipes in the ground are currently functioning as or functioned as in the past. I, I saw it in the second and third pages of the site plans. It looks as though they might have been attached to the garage structure?
Yes, so what happens is the there are roof leaders that come down, that collect the roof runoff from the gutters.
Right.
Come down the side of the building, and then they go into the ground, and they are connected to this 8-inch PVC that ultimately gets into that inlet that we located.
Located, okay. Perhaps a question for Mr. Haas, if she's going to testify. She mentioned in the last meeting that there was a toilet in the garage currently. Was that toilet plumbed to any one of those pipes, do we know of?
Now, if, if anything, the sanitary sewer for the lot 13 comes in the south side of the house. So if anything, I would think it would probably keep going into the garage.
And we don't have that on the plan, however, correct?
Uh, the connection to the garage, no. The connection to the house, yes.
Connection to the house, okay. And if the garage is to be eliminated, that connection is going to be eliminated as well, correct?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. Just another question, and I'm glad I have this in your report. On your second page here, there's a picture at the bottom here that shows that inlet, and I do see that 8-inch PVC pipe come into that inlet there. That's clearly, I, I see a corrugated flex piping in there as well. Is that functioning as a dry well, or is there, I'm trying to just understand what the current drainage looks like on this site, if there's anything else that's going on there?
So you have the 8-inch PVC, I'm sorry, comes in this location this way?
Correct.
So if you see the, the black pipe, that's the pipe going north.
Okay.
So that's the pipe that's draining this way, and then, I don't know if you can see the other pipe?
I do.
Opposite the PVC, that's the one going to the east out to the road.
Very good. And, Mr. Burr, if I could, would you feel as though a test pit this time of year gives a good sample of what a stormwater level would look like, or what a, okay. Thank you, Mr. Burr. That's all for now, Mr. Stires.
Mr. Chairman, a few other follow-ups based on all these comments. Mr. Burr, you used the word shallow, you mean relatively close to the surface? Looking at the existing condition, I'm sorry, looking at the two conditions, by removing the area around the old pool and the fire pit the area around the old pool and the fire pit and the garage and then putting up the quote-unquote "new" house, you'd be increasing coverage by 82 feet and you'd be, how close to full coverage if we were looking at these two lots collectively? You know, because you said one is, and they're about equal size. So one of them is 31.5, the other is 45.4, so would it be essentially the midpoint between those?
Sorry, what was that?
So the proposed development on lot 12 is 31.5%.
Right.
The changes to lot 13 would bring that to 45.4. These lots are very, very close to equal in size. So if we looked at the two lots together, would it be probably very close to the midpoint between 31.5 and 45.4?
Yes.
All right. And if I could just be reminded, what is the maximum coverage?
It'd be 36.1.
Maximum is?
35.
And right now it's, and the midpoint between those is how much?
It would be 36.1 over the two lots.
Okay.
And existing is approximately 35.
Okay, so existing is close, but really, from that standpoint, the existing lot is out of, is out of compliance? Okay.
Yes.
And then essentially the difference between the, you know, those two numbers, the, I think you said the 35.5 and the 30, is that essentially the 82 square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
I could just address a statement that was made earlier. Obviously, the board handles applications, the board knows the standard that, you know, the board is supposed to evaluate whether this application will constitute, at least as to the negative criteria, as our planner will address, a substantial detriment. So I just, I want to highlight the word substantial and I'm sure every applicant does this when they go before the board, but it's, again, it's not, there's a comment about, well, we could keep it the way it is or we could add a new home, and that's not really what the board is, at least as it comes to lot coverage, that's, in terms of assessing the detriment or possible detriment, the board's really supposed to consider whether or not the improvements are resulting in a substantial detriment as far as drainage is concerned.
Okay, last question about, you know, the existing versus the new. So the, we, the new lot, or, I'm sorry, the development on lot 12 would have a front yard that's about flat, slightly higher than the street. The current lot as it exists is pretty flat?
It sits up a little bit as well.
Okay. Okay, but by and large, the lot itself in the build condition wouldn't be that different than in the current condition. And the reason why I'm concerned about that is, you know, because again, water is flowing, let me get my directions right. Water is flowing, you know, from what I'll call Core Bradley Gardens down toward the Raritan border. And I guess I just want to make sure that, you know, water is going to continue to flow no worse or would go somewhere different because of, because of the structure that would be built.
Well, the other thing that we did, if you were to look essentially between the two sheds on the property line, I'm sorry about that. If you go to sheet four or five?
In this packet?
Yes.
Revised plans.
Revised plans. There's a black square there and what we're doing is putting a lawn inlet there. So we're going to put that on that PVC pipe and any of the drainage that is between the two houses is going to drain to that lawn inlet then into the piping system. So that's not, you know, again, that's kind of, I guess you could say belts and suspenders. You know, it's not going to sit in the lawn or it's, you know, even if it's reasonably flat, the water's going to drain along that property line and get into the inlet. There's, you know, a lot of this right now, the way it currently drains, without the new house, it drains to the north property line. And then as Bill Burr said the last meeting, that north property line is a little bit flat. So what I did in the revised plans is that front yard is going to drain to the front and it's got a decent pitch to it, but anything else is going to drain to the common property line and back to the inlet. So I think that is ultimately going to be in improved condition by getting water off the surface.
Can I go to the next page, actually, maybe it's the same one, sheet four, four or five? So the sheds for both properties are proposed to be in the back. Is there any asphalt or concrete or anything?
I don't think there's anything real, I mean, I have a shed in my back and I don't have any patio or walkways to it.
Question for our attorney here, and, you know, we're going to be very close, you know, if there is consensus to move forward, we're going to be very close to maximum coverage and that is a concern of the board. I'm sure it's a concern of the homeowner that lives there. If they are less than permitted in the zone, can we through our resolution lower that number for this specific property? So even though they could go up to, you know, 35.5, the current build is 31.5, can we say, yep, you can build up to 31.5?
No.
Or would that be considered too onerous?
Yeah, they can build up to what the ordinance would permit.
Okay.
If you don't go past that, of course, that's why they would need to vary.
All right, and the reason why I say that is, again, looking at the two properties together, you know, lot, even, you know, even with the removal of the garage, lot 13 is still kind of over. I'm just, you know, trying to think outside the box here and say, is there a way to essentially bank a little area on lot 12? And the answer is not really.
I don't, I don't believe so.
Not that I'm looking to penalize one homeowner over another, I'm just looking to, you know, look at, look at the neighborhood, look at the properties together is my reason for asking.
Keep in mind, we did what you asked us to do. I mean, this is worst-case scenario. They may not build the deck, they may not put the shed in. So this is what you asked us to do, kind of belts and suspenders and show everything. We didn't have the shed, but we're, I mean, we're proposing the shed, but, so that 31.5 is technically going to be less.
Okay. On the deck, and I know we talked about this last time, how did you calculate that deck?
Based on our discussions, it's not part of the improved coverage.
Okay.
It's going to be grass or natural.
Okay. But, and I know this is relatively de minimis and this is something that we are looking to potentially better define in our master plan review. You know, if there are however many footings, circular, square, whatever they would choose to do, that are concrete, it would be my argument, and this is not just this property, this is anywhere in Bridgewater, that, you know, those footings should somehow be calculated and counted. But, you know, it sounds to me like you're saying, right now counting zero, if somehow that got counted for the footings, the footings are a relatively small percentage of the whole deck and you're at 31 and a half. So there's still some play.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Kirsch.
To get back, so just to confirm, Mr. Stires, the 31.5 that you have on sheet one, that is inclusive of those proposed, like, deck and shed? Is that correct?
Yes, you can actually see a breakdown beneath the zoning table of everything that's included.
Yeah, I see that. So that's about 2,049 square feet, correct?
Yep, yes.
And then can you also do the calculation of, I use 45.4, coverage on lot 13?
Would be, working, I guess, from front to back, it would be the walk in the front, it would be obviously the house, the entire patio area, and that includes where the steps are because, you know, that's concrete in some form or another. The driveway going back and turning a little bit behind the patio.
Okay.
And then the relocated shed.
So that's about 2,652 square feet?
Correct, yes. Yes.
And then taking the proposed lot size, you divide that out and that's how you got the 45.7.
Yes.
That's interesting, because I have different numbers. I had a question regarding the garage. So in your proposal, you have that to be removed, correct?
We have it proposed to be removed, yes.
What is underneath the garage? Is it dirt? Is it concrete?
Well, I presume the padded side, it would be concrete. And then beneath that, it would be dirt.
In your proposal, to remove that concrete altogether, correct?
Yes.
And then just my last question, with the new proposal, is there any proposed vegetation on both, on the new lots?
Not at this point, no.
Thank you, Mr. Banga. Any other questions, our board?
Yes.
Mr. Magura.
Looking at the driveway for the new house, it's about 18 feet wide by 40 feet long. Do you really need 18 feet? I'm trying to squeeze blood from a stone.
Well, I looked at it, that way you could put two cars next to each other, side by side instead of stacked. You know, a typical parking spot is nine by 18, so that would be two parking spots wide. And then a car, typical parking space, 18, so, I mean, theoretically, you could put four cars there and not park on the street.
Thank you.
So I, I think in the same thing, I tried to squeeze it best I could, but I think that would be more beneficial, I guess you could say, instead of two cars stacking and you're always backing out to get one out. So you put them side by side, they can leave individually.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Perhaps from our professionals?
I have a few, Mr. Chairman. Maybe a few questions, a few comments, but we'll get there. Please. Craig, so back to Board Member Banga's question from a minute ago, and you probably took your calculator out. When you take a look at your cover sheet where you have your lot coverage calculations and then you have your zoning table, it looks like actually the math, if you were to take a look at proposed lot 13 with 2652 proposed over 6510, it looks like that percentage is actually 40.7%. Is that correct?
Probably. This is where I ran out of time.
Okay. I didn't know if you, I didn't know if you checked it. So your plan shows 45.4. It looks like the actual math would be 40.7%.
Right.
Proposed for-
Correct.
-a lot, lot 13.
I would hold the numbers in the table-
Fair enough.
-as accurate.
So, so when you take a look at the numbers, 2652 is currently proposed and that takes into account the removal of the garage.
Correct.
If you compare it to what's allowed at 35%, you're only about 373 square feet over on that particular lot, understanding that when you take both lots together, you're at about 82 square feet over. But what you're showing on your plan for lot 13 is an existing garage that traverses past the existing dwelling, past the patio, back to that existing garage. If your plan is to remove the garage, would you then be able to remove the section of driveway basically from the rear of the existing house back to where the garage is? Just on a quick, on a quick takeoff here, you're right at about 370 square feet, which if my, if my rough numbers are right, you essentially eliminate the lot coverage. I don't know if you looked at that. I don't know if there's a reason why the driveway-
The area I, the area I did look at was right behind the patio.
Right.
I mean, that, from the edge of the patio back to the garage, I kind of, I don't remember the number, but I did look at that.
Yeah, it tucks, it tucks back-
Yeah.
...behind the patio, but if you backed it up and cut it off at the back of the dwelling, it looks like you can, by removing the garage and that rear portion of the driveway, it looks like you can actually eliminate lot coverage altogether, which obviously we're hearing is, is a big concern both by the board and me frankly at the last meeting. We talk about drainage ad nauseam these days for all the right reasons. It's an important topic, right? And especially in a neighborhood like this, you know, we talk about, you know, what's a negligible increase in runoff and I agree with you, it's really hard to quantify that. The problem or the concern I have is in a neighborhood like this with very small lots that are already at or over their coverage, you have a couple of properties that are over, a couple thousand square feet here and there, and that really does amount to something in terms of runoff impacts, much different than if we were in the R40 zone or R30 zone where we have acre properties. A thousand square feet of a patio is not going to impact on an acre like it would on a 5,000 square foot lot. So certainly I think you guys are headed in the right direction with removing the drain, or removing the garage, but, you know, I would request that you guys take a look, if you can, if you can squeeze down that existing driveway even further, get rid of that extra stretch that now isn't leading anywhere, you may be able to eliminate it altogether and then, and then from my perspective, the drainage concerns disappear. Not really a question, I guess it is a question, would you consider taking, or would your client consider taking a look at that? Because I think you're, I think you're close otherwise.
Yeah, I would say we'd be amenable to doing that.
Okay. Let's see, if I had any other questions at this point. Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mr. Burr, Board Planner, Ms. Sormid.
Thank you. I do, I also echo what Mr. Burr said about the driveway. It was something we were kind of whispering about over here. The driveway currently, and this is just from a perspective of, you know, Bill talked about the drainage and the impervious coverage and potentially eliminating the improved lot coverage variance there. The driveway length is approximately like, I'd say 75 or 80 feet long because it go, it used to go all the way back to the garage that was at the rear of the property. So from a parking perspective, even if you chopped off about 20 feet, you're still looking at a 60-foot driveway to the back of the house. So, you know, it would be stacked tandem parking, but you could fit more cars and, you know, if there was a parking concern by limiting that. But I think they're probably fine with the length of the driveway up to the back of the house. And just for, as Bill was mentioning, the difference between what's proposed right now, the 2652 total square feet in coverage, the 35, to comply, 35% would be 2,278 square feet. So like Bill said, about 374 or so square feet. So I think that could, that would be, you know, a significant improvement. I just had some questions, I guess, you know, there was a pretty good discussion about the existing elevation of the site and then the finished floor elevation. And I just want to make sure we're clear, you know, you said, I think the letter showed that the elevation was 80 or so and then the diagram of the home shows 85 and a half. So how much of the foundation is exposed or is proposed to be exposed?
Be the difference, so, well, actually, yeah, so the foundation would be approximately 16 inches down from the finished floor. So you're talking about four feet up?
Four feet. And what, do you know what's on the existing dwelling, if it's similar to that?
I think it is similar to that.
Okay. I only mention that because, you know, there's no architectural plans. What's shown in the letter and was, I think, provided in the previous hearing as an exhibit that never got discussed but was handed out, it's a pretty picture, but I just want to make sure, you know, that that's not what it's going to look like probably if there's a four or five-foot exposed foundation. I would probably recommend that the board require some landscaping or something to help shield the exposed foundation a little bit, just from an aesthetic perspective. I think that could be helpful to help, you know, screen that foundation portion. I just wanted to point out one other thing from the plans. I know that they were quickly turned over to get the resubmission. I just wanted to make sure that the total side yard for proposed lot 12 was noted. I think in the memo, the original memo, it shows 11 feet for the combined. It should be 22 because both side yards are each 11 feet. So it should be 22. I just want to make, that's more of a housekeeping item. And I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sormid. Any other questions? At this time, I'd like to open it to any members of the public that wish to. Post any questions regarding the testimony just heard, please feel free to come forward at this time.
I'd just ask that it just be limited to questions this time, just because we have another expert witness that needs to go and so.
Agreed, Ms. Silver.
Matter of timing, that's all.
Thank you, agreed.
Hi, Paul Vedder, 148 Chestnut Street. Got some quite scenarios on your questions with the water. I've been in that house about, give or take 50 years.
Questions, please.
What's that?
Please ask questions.
This portion of the hearing is just to question Mr. Stires on his testimony. There'll be a time at the end of the hearing where you can make comments and offer testimony. Right now?
For you guys.
Yeah, just questions for now. And then you'll have another.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, at the end.
You may pose any questions to the attorneys and the testimony just heard.
Anthony Gaeta, I live on 7 Ober. I'm the house directly behind, and those are pictures of my backyard that are there. And I'll say, Mr. Stires, your testimony of where the inlet is behind my shed is correct. But I have my survey for my house.
Please refrain from making comments right now, just limit it to questions.
Oh, okay. Well, the, you're calling it an inlet in the top north part of my property, where you said that there is debris and dirt. That is, according to my, is a manhole.
You please ask questions again, you're making a statement.
The PVC pipe that's going into the inlet behind my shed. From my understanding, that's, now, are you going to be tying into the drainage pipe that is going along the north part of the property into the manhole? It's not an inlet because it's covered with a metal, a metal, I don't know what it even is. But are you going to be tying into that drain, drainage pipe?
No.
Is my question.
No.
So where is the water that is going to be going off of the roof of the house? Where is that going to be going to? If there's going to be liters of water off the roof going down the gutters, where is that water draining to? I'm assuming, you know, I'm the first, I'm the downstream neighbor. So all that water is coming towards my yard. So where is that water going to be tied into? How is that drain pipe going to be affected with the added water that's coming off of this house?
The southerly side would drain to the common property line between the two properties and then towards you. But as I said, we're putting an inlet in just before your property and connecting into that eight-inch pipe.
Right. And that eight-inch pipe, did you uncover any ground to see where the angle of that pipe is going to or from?
We did not, but we did put water into the roof leaders and that water discharged into the inlet.
And you were able to see that from over the fence?
Correct.
Okay. Because on the angle that I see when I'm on my property, and I've understood now that that easement is not, it's on my property, but I don't own the easement, from my understanding. And did you get any approval from Raritan to use or to add into that drainage pipe?
We did not, but the pipe is connected into the inlet.
It is. But was that done through Bridgewater or Raritan?
I can't say that, but knowing the fact that that pipe was probably, purely speculation, that pipe was probably there before your house. And then they connected the inlet, the pipe to the inlet.
Right. Because from the angle, because where that, I spoke to the prior owner and he had a pool there, which we've already stated. And that's where that pipe is angling directly to, is where the pool was. So, you know, I can't see, so based on what I'm seeing here, where your plans are, the dashed lines there, which are going parallel to my fence line, is correct from the manhole, not the inlet, to the inlet behind my shed. But from your markings, it's going along the garage line, where when I'm standing behind my shed, the angle of that pipe is coming directly from the pool.
Well, we couldn't verify that because we couldn't get onto your property.
Yeah, because that's, that easement is not my property. It's, I know, it's owned by Raritan. The easement, I'm, you know, I live there, I do have some material there. But, you know, that area, that easement.
The easement's on your property, so it's.
It is, it is on my property, it's where my fence line is.
You're well within your rights to allow somebody onto your property to assess the drainage conditions.
And if I may say quickly, you know, I was checking the website to see when this meeting was going to be. You guys did say it was going to be May 7th. The agenda wasn't posted until, I don't know, Friday or Saturday. So it only gave me two days to, you know, kind of collect my thoughts and to approach with some questions. So I wasn't able to talk to anyone from Raritan Borough.
If you're going to be giving testimony, you should really be sworn in.
So that's why I'm trying to make the best I can with the two days I had to try to phone my own town. So I think that was, you know, I didn't have enough time to really put together my thoughts on what we have here.
I also did inquire with the Borough of Raritan, Lou Guera, to see if there was any particular plans related to the subdivision that you were a part of, and he did not have any documents.
He didn't have any, what was that, any what?
He didn't have any grading utility plans. Because I was looking to verify where everything was going.
And he didn't have any plans?
For your subdivision.
On doing?
For your subdivision.
Okay. So there wasn't an approval to tie into or use the easement that exists?
I can't say that because he did not have any information.
All right, so I think we should have some type of approval from a town that we're going to be using. Yeah, so, okay, all right. I apologize, I'm just trying to do my best and inquire the things that I would like to talk about. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up question for our attorney. Has all proper notice been given for this hearing and specifically this case being heard within this hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Mr. Peck, is that inclusive of Raritan residents as well, or just Bridgewater?
Well, the notice was originally given properly before the April 16 hearing and then it was carried after the, after we conducted the hearing in April 16.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant, I meant any typically, anybody, any residents within 200 square feet?
Yeah, yeah, so if you have a situation like this, where you have a property that's, you know, on or close to a municipal boundary line, it's incumbent on the African to get the list from the other municipality as well. And then you have to have noticed in both Bridgewater and Raritan.
And if I could just answer that, I submitted an affidavit because I was personally responsible for the notice and of course I requested a 200-foot list from the Borough of Raritan as well as the township of Raritan. So notice was proper.
And just to make sure we bring this to, this portion to a close. Mr. Peck, our announcement at the last meeting that we would hear at this meeting, that was the sufficient notice?
Correct.
Regardless of exactly when an agenda is posted on a website?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes the public portion for this witness. Mr. Silver, do you have any other witnesses?
Do, we have our planner who I'd like to call. And planner was sworn in at the last hearing. Just give us, give us one moment.
Good evening. Evening.
Can you just state your name for the record?
Certainly. Alexander Doherty. The last name is D O U G H E R T Y.
Mr. Doherty, I don't believe you were accepted as an expert planner at the last hearing, so if you wouldn't mind just putting your educational credentials and background on the record in the field of planning?
Certainly. My education's at a Rutgers-Weilstein, with a master's in city and regional planning, concentration development, redevelopment studies. I'm licensed at current PPE as well as nationally, AICP. I testify in this capacity on a weekly and daily basis. I believe this is my first time in front of this board. I would say I've also presented at the League of Municipalities, scheduled to present next month at the State Development Redevelopment Conference. I'm also the professional development officer for the American Planning Association for St. New Jersey.
Is there any objections to Mr. Doherty's qualifications?
None, no.
Please proceed.
And just to recap, because I stole your thunder at the last hearing, I handed out a planning exhibit that Mr. Doherty prepared. It's marked as A2, so just as a reminder to the board, that exhibit, as I refer to it as a planning exhibit, is in your possession.
I'd like to go through that exhibit, if it pleases the board. It's color rendering, a little larger than this one. It's 15 slides, consists of maps and photographs, photographs I took of myself. Page one is just an overall Bridgewater zoning layout for the municipality. On the bottom left, you'll see a red circle, red arrow. It's approximately where we're at within the municipality. As we've heard, we're essentially abutting there in Minnesota border, so our neighbors to the rear. Slide two, we kind of circled the area in question again in red. And takeaway from this slide is really just the difference between the green area, as you see identified as the R20. The blue area is the R10. It's a little faded, smaller font there. Blue 10 is reference to the zoning we're in. As we can see just from the zone map, again, found on the town site, the blue area is really chopped up. There's really no neighborhood continuity, if you will, by virtue of lot size, at least from this interpretation, as compared to that R20 area, where the lots seem to be a little bit more uniformed in character. So that's the takeaway from this slide. Slide three is a drone shot I took myself when visiting the site on April 6th. That's the property in question with the black siding, row of trees, garage poking off in the back with a white door labeled site, green fence around it. That's the property in question. As we can see, we kind of have a, an area to the left that is fairly large visually, lawn. And so that's the area in question for orientation purposes for the proposed lot. Slides four, I believe we discussed at the last hearing, some of the extensive renovations that the applicant made when acquiring the property, how it looked before. And, you know, basically brought it down, brought it back to life, I'm sorry, from its current condition, its former condition. So if, you know, if it pleases the board, kind of flipping back between slide three and four, you'll kind of start to see that transformation, that positive investment into the site. Slide five, again, we saw at the last hearing, was the ongoing process, you know, the renovation process and what the site looks like, the dwelling looks like from interior perspective on those bottom two slides, left and right bottom. Slide six, outlined in red are the lots in question, lot 13 and 12 at the bottom left. This is the tax, tax lot, if you will, tax map, I'm sorry, from NJ Property Facts. They have every proper tax map in the state filed. As we can see here, just from orientation purposes, is the various lot widths, right? When we look at the variance, we'll discuss in a moment, a lot of the variances really do come down to the lot width. Yes, we have the lot coverage issue and we've really thrown that in through over the course of two hearings. There are a few other variances and they will kind of interlate with that lot width here. We can kind of see the, there's quite a few properties that have that 50-foot width, where the zone requires 100. There are a few scattered out that are 100 feet in width, as the zone requires. And the next couple of slides, I took extra care really to use NJ DEP's GeoWeb, which has property information by way of lot, area and lot width, as well as the tax map to kind of, for illustrious purposes, highlight properties, not necessarily that are under a lot area, but are under a lot width. And this is the immediate neighborhood shown on slide seven. Slide eight, I take about a one-block radius out from the property. Everything in yellow has a lot of less than 100 feet. Vast majority of that being 50-foot wide lots. There's one or two in there that are 70, 75, 60, 65. The vast majority of these lots, you see in yellow, have a lot width of 50. So when we talk about neighborhood compatibility, conformity and the characteristics of the neighborhood, the neighborhood built environment, as you see from this slide, slide eight here, most of these properties are 50-foot wide lots. Slide nine is an aerial top-down view from the drone. As we can see, the existing conditions as of April 6th. The pool was removed, some patio, paver stones, remnants, little playground set. That lot right there is, again, the property, proposed lot 12. On the other side, with the driveway, the large garage, the shed that was in much discussion at the last hearing, on the fence line. These are the items that we've just discussed in great detail of essentially being removed. And I think your professionals have solved the issues with lot coverage by virtue of essentially drawing a line off that rear roof line. And that driveway to the rear that would essentially go to the driveway would be eliminated, thus essentially come in compliance with lot coverage. So for orientation purposes, essentially everything behind that line, as we've just heard, is in consideration to be removed, essentially, except for that bright white patio. Everything behind that house essentially will be lawn. And as we've heard in great detail, a drainage pitch there, approximately right where that back of that rear garage would be to collect any stormwater runoff between the two neighboring properties. But essentially, that's the existing current condition as it is, as it sits today. Take a look at the existing neighborhood for continuity and perspective. We do have some larger lots to the left on slide 10. Larger homes on 100-foot wide lots. And when I look at this particular property, you know, and essentially where we're at within a neighborhood, it has that missing void, if you will, that missing tooth from the public realm. There's just something missing there. One may argue, I think we had a discussion last hearing, just to put a brand-new large house there. I don't think that's really feasible at the current moment, given the extensive renovations that were done and where we're at today in the process. But there is a noticeable void in the neighborhood makeup here on Chestnut. We kind of spin the drone around to get a perspective of those larger lots. As we can see, just a few right in the middle and then off to the left, kind of tapers down to smaller 50-foot wide lots. Development behind us, again, smaller lots as well. Spin the drone around for some aerial perspectives. Right across the street, as we can see, we have some smaller homes, modest in scale and size. And as we've heard from the proposed layout and concept, as we are under an FAR on a smaller lot, I think the proposed house and existing house is more in line with some of the neighborhood built environment, if you will, and existing conditions. The last, this last slide on 13, I'm sorry, slide 13, is a mosh-up, really, of just different angles and shots in the neighborhood of the makeup. I want to just point your attention to the top-right slide. There's a little house in the middle there on the corner that's actually a separate lot. So when we talk about, you know, the makeup, if you will, of the neighborhood, it is, it is made up predominantly of smaller homes, smaller lots in the middle there. Orientation purposes, front yard setbacks and alignments, we see just on the corner. It's, it has its own unique identity, personality. And then we go to the bottom left, we can kind of see again, more of some more modern. And then we go to the bottom left, we can kind of see again, more of some more modern, contemporary build-out, bigger homes than we typically have seen, again, smaller lots. So when we look at what could be there by way of 100-foot wide lot and what could be built there on a smaller lot, I think we have a good, a good, good mix, if you will. And slide 13, that bottom left, I think, is a really good indication of what a modern home looks like on a smaller lot, and they do exist. Slide 14, just different perspective, the same property in question. And the point of this, this shot here really is to show, again, that visual void and just how noticeable that, that gap is on what would be considered Lot 12. And we can kind of see going to the corner there, so you know, the lots over there are of the 50-foot makeup and more, more in alignment. So I think we have a good, a more new, modern potential build-out here, transitioning into, as we can see on the left there, a relatively recent new home. So we have a good transition from some of the older neighborhood to some newer development style. Page, Lot 15, the last, I'm sorry, slide 15, the last one, was shown at the last hearing. It's just a conceptual idea. I know it was called out that the dimensions here aren't exactly reflective of what would be there, and I think we just submitted a revised plan to show you that this idea house, this visual look is what we're going for, this, this small, modest-scale can work on a 50-foot wide lot. And I think the neighborhood build-out shows that newer homes, as well as older homes, fit on a 50-foot wide lot. With that being said, existing conditions, these are identified as two separate lots, as council indicated technically by law, they are one lot. But nonetheless, just looking at the, the numbers here, each of these lots would be undersized, 10,000 square foot is what's required, about 6,501 for Lot 12, 6,510 for existing Lot 13. We'll go right into kind of the meats and potatoes here. On paper, it looks like there's a lot of variance, again, that's that 50-foot wide width here. So minimum side yard setback would be required of 15. Existing condition on Lot 13, with just the one side is 6.84. The, the proposed new lot would be 11. And then there's a minimum side yard setback for total, which would be 40 feet. Given these are 50-foot wide lots, that would indicate a 10-foot wide house, which is not realistic. And that's not what the proposed condition would be for Lot, proposed Lot 12, or the existing condition for Lot 13. So virtually, we would have another variance for the, for the combined side yard setback, where the existing conditions on Lot 3 would be about 20 and a half, and Lot 12 would be about 22. Again, as we saw the existing conditions of the surrounding neighborhood, many of those lots are 50-foot wide lots, thus, many of the properties here would have that same variance, listed variance by, by natural development patterns. I did not see anything reflective of a 10-foot wide house during my site visit and coming to neighborhood. As we've just discussed in, in really great details, the maximum improved lot coverage, as it was testified before, at the last hearing, we were concerned about additional amenities that are customary to residential homes. The existing lot coverage for Lot 12 was 29%, and it was, question was raised, is that enough to allow for a deck and sheds in that regards? So we came back with a modified plan to show you those, those custom amenities most detached dwellings and neighborhoods have, and we came back at 31 and a half, still under the required 35% lot coverage for that proposed Lot 12. And as we just discussed in detail, and I'm not exactly sure where we landed on this.
I'm going to, I'm going to chime in here.
Yeah.
So I spoke with the applicant while you were speaking, Mr. Doherty, and the applicant has stipulated to complying with a 35% lot coverage requirement on Lot 13.
Lot 13.
So the lot coverage variances are now gone.
There we have it. So essentially, what we're here for today would be lot width, lot area, and some side yard setback, which, when we look at these variances, I would like to note, there was concern relating to FAR. We are under the floor area ratio, the back and apport test, the lots, even though they are undersized, the houses are within proportion to those regulations, the bulk standards for that 50 and that 6,500 square foot lot. The remaining relief would be classified under what we call the C2, flexible balance. So lesser tier variance, it's not a use relief that we're typically used to hearing, you know, with undersized lots. With that being said, the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriment. I bring that up because when we look at this, the benefits of this application, we have an opportunity to provide for new housing for a growing community. I think that's paramount. We need to find housing, but we need to be cautious of environmental limitations. I think here, given that we will be complying with the, the lot coverage, as we testified to at the last hearing, we will work with the engineer to satisfy any concerns from stormwater management and drainage in that regards. Given we are in compliance with lot coverage for an undersized lot, I do not believe there would be a substantial detriment by way of stormwater management and drainage, given we do comply with those regulations on an undersized lot. But nonetheless, we have stipulated if there was an extra added concern, that we would work with the town engineer to satisfy that, the board engineer's concerns. I think the application collectively would advance purposes A, E, G, I, and M of the municipal land use law. I want to emphasize on purpose I, which provides for a desirable visual environment. I think filling in that void, coming into alignment with the neighborhood continuity and characteristics here, it certainly promotes desirable visual environment. I would say, purpose E, to provide for appropriate populations and suitable locations. This is a detached, single-family dwelling in a single-family residential zone. I think the population is, density is consistent with the neighborhood pattern here. I do not think we're out of character, and certainly for more efficient use of land, you know, we have an opportunity, again, to utilize kind of a unique situation here, instead of, you know, essentially building on virgin land, infrastructure in that regards. We have a well-established residential neighborhood, again, putting that detached swelling in an established neighborhood, I think it's more efficient use of land of that 100-foot wide lot. What I do want to point out about this particular property is, this house has sat here for quite some time, but what's unique about this property is, the house is kind of offset to the side, as, you know, versus if this house was more central to the two lots, you know, or, you know, right on that lot line, I don't think it would be at, at that caliber that is today for consideration. You know, really, it's just a clean cut down the middle, taking that garage down. That lot there is suitable, as we see that existing neighborhood pattern. From a planning standpoint, you know, testifying, most subdivisions do require a knockdown, you know, in that regards, this, this is here. This is just sitting there off to the left, proposed Lot 12, just a large void in the neighborhood fabric. A lot of the larger homes on the 100-foot wide lots, they're more centered. So if this property was a little bit more centered, I think conditions and considerations may, may be different. This house is just catty cornered off on its own essential lot, if you will. I can't attest to why it was built that way, when it was built, it's been there for quite some time, but it does, you know, drive some unique considerations by the character of the existing conditions there. I'll conclude that we have an opportunity here, basically, to present a better zoning alternative. You know, the 100-foot, 10,000-square-foot lot requirements, I think this provides a better zoning alternative, which is in line and key with that character built environment, with little to no detriment. When I look at this application collectively, again, advances purpose A, H, E, I, and M of the municipal land use law, and I do not see a substantial detriment by way of the biggest concern of these past two hearings, which is stormwater management, lot coverage. We have an applicant here that's willing and able to comply and work, and, you know, I think we've had that massage where we landed on something that's, something a little bit more palatable than we walked in here with, and I think the board can look upon this application favorably, that the criteria has been met and would be warranted for approval with no detriment to the surrounding neighborhood.
Mr. Doherty, if I could just ask, so you, did you, did you cite the purpose A?
Yes.
Isn't it true that now that Lot 13 is going to comply with the maximum permitted lot coverage, that this actually now constitutes an improvement to existing conditions?
Certainly does.
And would you say that advances purpose A as well?
So purpose A, for the audience and members of the board, is to encourage municipal action to guide appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, and morals, and general welfare. So again, bringing that lot more into compliance certainly advances purpose A.
So just follow up on that, just to, to address Councilman Kersh's questions from last hearing. Let's just say hypothetically, Lot 12 was to build out their lot, and so that the lot coverage on Lot 12 was to reach the maximum permitted at 35%. Wouldn't that still also constitute an improvement to existing conditions?
Certainly.
Thank you.
I'd like to open up for any questions regarding Mr. Doherty's testimony.
Mr. Doherty, I just had a question based on some of the photographs you took.
Yes.
There's a row of trees in Lot 12. I think I only saw that one tree was looked at to be removed, which is a maple tree, but actually, there's like a row, and I counted about 30. I wanted to get the number from you specifically, and what kind of trees those are.
I'm not a.
Mr. Styers can.
Sure, expert.
Arbivides, right? So I, okay. And where I'm going with this is, so I have, I have arbivides, and they, they suck up a lot of water, right? And if there's 30 of them, that's sucking off between 300 to 600 gallons per, per week. And maybe this is for Mr. Styers, if we want to bring him back. But I'm, I'm curious, and I appreciate, you know, the applicant reducing the coverage on Lot 13. And I don't know if we've sufficiently explored the impact of removing those trees. And, and I don't see, and I didn't see in the plans if any other trees were going to be proposed on the lots.
And, you know, as we're waiting for an answer, and this is, this is not a minor point, because, you know, presence or absence of trees can make a notable impact on where water goes.
So I guess question to the applicant would be, given the absence of these trees, would the applicant be willing to work with our engineers?
Yes.
To plant, maybe not the exact 30, but something in between that works for both us as well as.
Absolutely.
I thought last time we were here, we were talking about planting on adjacent property, and there was the talk about the pipe, but I think, yeah, we, it's something we talked about last time.
I mean, there's discussions with the applicant right now that will, that would, there would probably be a buffer between the two lots, which would be done by way of trees, but I don't want to commit to an actual landscaping plan, but we, but we would work with the township engineer, obviously, to, to address your concerns, because it's obviously noted that, that trees are important for drainage, stormwater management.
Could we touch on that point, however, regarding that berm between the lot that's northerly? I'm curious now, especially we're talking about the slab being brought up about two feet, let's say. What does the existing structure that's northerly, how would that look like with the proposed structure on Lot 12? I'm curious to see what that looks like and what a berm would look like, and what type of shrubbery or what type of trees are proposed for planting in between the two houses there. I understand from what we've seen visually, that there's a slope, a negative, a positive sloping going toward Lot 12.
Which, which.
The lot to the north, I believe.
Marrowden Barrow?
No, I'm sorry, that would be in Bridgewater.
Okay.
In Bradley Gardens.
100-foot wide lot, the bigger house?
Exactly.
The, the large house next door?
Lot 11, potentially.
Maybe Lot 11?
I think what we have here is a natural kind of step-down, you know, that's a little higher, it's larger.
Correct.
It's going to be slightly, like we talked about, elevated, but there is that dip, and then we'll, you know, step down into the existing neighborhood pattern. I think it's, it's a good transitional build visually, I, I, that's how I see it happening.
Right.
Chairman, if Mr. Styers could just have a chance to address your, your comment or your question.
I think probably the best way to, is if you'll get page three of 15 of the planning exhibits, you can see the house to the north on the left-hand side, and you can see that it sits up very high compared to the existing house. See the brown house on the, on the left? See the roof line going up, but you still don't see the top of the roof.
I think page 14 shows a better example, just the scale. I think this new, Lot 12 would be like a step-down kind of approach to the smaller existing Lot 13.
And that be composed of a berm and shrubbery or trees? Mr. Banga had previously mentioned some arbivides potentially.
There'd be nothing north of our property because of the easement.
Because of the easement.
If any, if the trees were, say, for example, the arbivides were relocated, I would suggest to put them against the, the rear property line. So you'd basically, same orientation, but against the rear property line.
Does that mean you can't put it in between the existing home that's next to Lot 12?
I would prefer not to, because like I said, I have a swale there that's collecting the water to direct it to the new lawn inlet in the back.
So you're saying the swale would redirect to, if you moved back the arbivides to the, the back of the lot? Is that what you're referring to, Mr. Styers?
So if you look on the plan, there's a swale along the property line, and then there's an inlet right here that would go into the existing inlet. That row of arbivides is right here, just take them and move them back, and if anything, possibly supplement on 13.
However, at this time, nothing is proposed north of Lot 12, correct?
Because of the 20-foot easement. So you have 10-foot on our property, 10-foot on the property to the north, and the pipe in that easement. So there's nothing we can do here.
Not even a rain garden? A rain garden is not an option for that area.
Well, that would be, again, that would be in the easement.
So there's nothing to.
What, the front garden?
Or, or address any privacy concerns because of those two?
Uh, no. I mean, there's a fence there now.
I would have to, I'd have to check the, the language in the easement, and we weren't able to locate the.
No, there is no, there is no language in the easement, because it, it may be shown, but based on five people searching it, it doesn't exist.
So.
So there's a pipe there with really no easement.
And, and just to, there's plenty of easements that allow for certain things to be constructed within the easement, such as a fence or vegetation, so without having a document that, that shows, you know, what, what can be done in the easement, it's hard to answer what, what we can do as far as screening and buffering, but if we're permitted to do it.
We would, we would then.
Screen and buffer.
By moving them to the rear lot line, are you impacting that pipe that's in the back?
That pipe is actually a same thing off our property, so we would probably put it, you know, not right on the property line, but in a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. Mr. Dockerty, you mentioned in your testimony, I'm referring to your, your, the, the planning exhibits. When you were on the second slide, you said, you used the term chopped up, chopped up lot design. Could you elaborate on that?
Just, when I say that, I just envision like, you know, just chop, something like a chef. So it's, it's a lot more lots, there's a lot more here than just a, what we saw in the R20 by way of just uniformity, if you will. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot going on in the R10 on slide two. That's what I meant by chopped. The, again, the R10 requirement is 100-foot wide lots. So when I look at slide two, all those, all those hash lines are reflective and illustrative of lot lines.
You mentioned, or not mentioned, I'm going to turn to page six. Guess that's a section of the tax map, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this property, lots 12 and 13 are part of Block 150.
Correct.
And in that row of lots, starting to the south, corner of Perry and Chestnut, the corner lot is, says 100 by, was it 130? 30.
130.95 by 100.
Right. And then lots 15 and 14 are 50-foot by 100, and they each have a house?
Yes.
And then you have, pardon me?
50 by 100.
Okay. And then you have Lot 14, 13, 12, we know about Lot 11. What are the dimensions of that?
100 by, the map's a little bigger than mine, 100 by 130.14.
And is.
Consistently about 130 in depth.
And that's, has that larger light brown house?
Yes, that's, that's the neighborhood we were talking about.
And then Lot 10, lot is, again, 100 by a little less, 129, right? And then Lot ten, lot is, again, a hundred by a little less, one twenty-nine, right? On one side at least, the north side. And there's a single-family home on that lot?
Yes.
And then moving to the north, Lot nine, again, a hundred by roughly one twenty-nine, and is there a single-family home there?
I believe yes.
And then Lot eight, a hundred by one twenty-nine. Is there a home on that?
I believe so. I believe I have, on that immediate side of the street, a, one, two, three, four, five, six. I have six conforming lot sizes before they drop again down to under a hundred, so I believe...
So that's Lots three, four, and five are slightly undersized for the zone, right?
Correct.
And then Lots one and two are conforming.
Believe, I believe so.
And then across the street, across Chestnut Street, you have mix. You have some that are fifty. Lot one is fifty feet wide by two hundred. So they're deeper lots, fronting on Chestnut. And then you have Lot two is one hundred by two hundred, right? And I guess do each of these have single-family homes going down that the west side of Chestnut?
Yes.
Okay. And they're all, so some are conforming to the zone and some probably predate the zoning.
I would assume so, yes.
Okay. So you have a mix. And then you go further west, and again, you see some conforming lot sizes and some that are the older. Do you have any idea the lot, the lots that are fully one hundred feet wide, were any of these subject to a merger of lots? Do you know?
I don't have that information. I will tell you, outside of Slide six, is the other portion that's more reflective on Slide eight. The bottom yellow lots in Lot eight, when I looked at the tax map, and then I looked at the existing built environment, actually, some of those lots down there were actually subdivided. The tax map doesn't show it. They're separate lots, separate homes, separate addresses. So it was kind of a balance to really balance the two, but as far as to answer your question, I don't have the extensive history of all the lots that were subject to that merger.
Okay. Do you know of any other subdivisions in this zone, in this neighborhood first, or in the zone that were granted, you know, subdivisions for smaller lot sizes, minimum lot size?
No, I did not send an OPR request in for the R-10 zone, but I just, I just referenced before, the tax map had a larger, I believe it was about two of them I saw on the corner, and then now there's, between that creation of that tax map, I don't have the data on this tax map when it was created, between that creation of the tax map and the current, something was, two lots were subdivided at minimum.
Okay.
But I do not have the OPR for the entire R-10.
Okay. Because, you know, you presented your perspective that this is not, I think you used technical terms that, you know, addressing the variances that are being sought, you used another term, better zoning alternative, in your concluding comments. Could you elaborate on that?
Certainly. There's a Supreme Court case law referred to as Kaufman. One of the takeaway soundbites is provide for a better zoning alternative. And in this particular application, given the existing built environment of that house kind of being catty-cornered off to the side, I think it's a better zoning alternative than that strict adherence to the hundred-foot wide lot. And I think when we look at this, it's not an isolated condition. That was...
Okay. I understand. Are there any, could you, so the, it seems like the applicant is removing the request for variance for lot coverage, if I understand this correct? But there's still other bulk variances, lot size setback, correct?
Correct.
And from a municipal land use law perspective or planning principles, what weight do you give and what is the standard principle, planning principle, either encapsulated in the municipal land use law or you as, starting with the municipal land use law? Is lot coverage carry a greater factor or greater weight? Is the lot size, is lot setback, are those less significant in the municipal land use law standards?
In the standards, I would...
That's what I'm asking about, standards. I'm not, start with that.
I think, I think lot coverage, right, in today's current atmosphere and climate is a serious concern. We just had all the DEP flood regulations for elevations and that purposes. We just had an extensive two-hearing session on drainage and lot coverage. As a professional player, I think the lot coverage and where we're at today with, especially with just, just early at the top of this month about the new tree ordinance statewide and cutting down trees, I think lot coverage is a concern. Character of a neighborhood, this is a more suburban, it's not an urban, but rooting back to the essence of which one's better, sound planning is rooting in zoning. So if your municipality says a hundred percent lot coverage, that's, that's what you guys believe is sound planning as a community. But in this particular essence, in this case here, and in what I see collectively as a state, I would argue that for a community, suburban community, lot coverage is critical. We have a huge effort at a state level to combat climate change and the flooding. You know, we have preservation zones, open spaces for a reason, but I don't think this would constitute overdevelopment by way of virtue of the existing pattern, and we are in conformance with that lot coverage requirement, even for an undersized lot.
You're dwelling on lot coverage, but I'm asking you, you're not, you haven't commented, maybe you forgot my question, but the lot size and setback. You've talked about lot coverage, and the applicant has changed that, so that's not a consideration now.
So we're...
Now we're talking about bulk variances for lot size and setback. So could you elaborate on that, please?
The lot size, I think, when we look at this, from a municipal land use law perspective, I don't, I don't think I can answer that directly. From a neighborhood perspective, I don't think the lot size is a detriment. When I look at the setback, I, when we look at this application, proposed Lot twelve, that house is as centered as it can get. As far as the impact of the existing dwelling there, of that, I believe it's six, six and change, that side yard setback, that's been a condition that's existed for quite some time with little to no detriment. We believe we have adequate separation at scale visually in conformity with the neighborhood. We have an extensive backyard. I think we have adequate light air and open space and separation, and I think our adjacent Lot eleven is more centered as well. So again, I think even though we are asking for that side yard setback, I don't believe there's a caliper for a substantial detriment threshold here.
So you mentioned that because the existing structure is on the one side, that that is a, an important point as to why there should be subdivision granted? Is that what you said earlier?
I think it's a unique characteristic that is here on this property, which draws that visual gap.
But you not answered my question. So is it the, the location of the structure, you're saying it's unique, but I'm asking you, is the location of the existing structure a reason to grant the variance, variances sought?
No, to grant the variance would be the advancement of municipal land use law. I think it plays into suitability for subdivision, but I don't think, just because the house is located here at this side portion, that meets the criteria for subdivision. I don't think that stands the threshold.
Do you, do you think that since this neighborhood is zoned R-10, do you think that's an incorrect zoning district for this neighborhood? That's kind of what you're arguing. You're arguing that the, the lot, the ten thousand square foot lot is not appropriate. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but that's kind of what you're, it's kind of my takeaway.
And we have a lot more lots as visually representative in the R-10 that do not meet that threshold. It would be up to the municipality in a reexamination report to maybe considering the existing conditions that are associated with that R-10 neighborhood. But as far as a rezone, I don't believe this would constitute a rezone. The existing environment is what it is today. I don't think we need to go to that extent. I don't think there's a whole lot left here in this neighborhood from my visual combing of the neighborhood, of a, of a large void in the neighborhood fabric that would constitute consideration or interest, if you will, from a subdivision standpoint. I didn't pick anything up.
Do you know, have you done any research as to when the, this neighborhood was zoned R-10 and what the...
I do not have the information available. I do not. I might have had it at the last hearing. Right now, I don't have that.
I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a, can I ask a question? Are you familiar with the Poland versus South Plainfield case?
Yes, I am.
And do you think the fact that the, and if you, if you would be, so Khan, can you explain the case, or if you need me to, I'm happy to, but...
So...
The Poland versus South Plainfield case?
Sorry?
I can get that to you momentarily.
Right, yeah.
Are you joking?
Anyway, you can let me know later.
Oh, okay. Sure.
The Poland, we referenced that, that case. The takeaway from that case law is the benefits of this application, the court, you know, insisted that we look at everything collectively as a whole. Does this application and the benefits that come with it outweigh detriment, a substantial detriment? We can look at variances, and we can look at zoning and land use. It's a matter of land use law. You're going to strike a variance from time to time, you know, there is, and that's where the Kaufman case also says a better zoning alternative. The Poland versus South Plainfield, the takeaway is collectively, do the, the benefits of this application outweigh the detriment? And I think by virtue of...
The whole application.
Of the whole application.
So, so just, the board is considering setback variances, lot size variances, but we also spent, I don't know, maybe four hours talking about lot coverage, right?
Correct.
So the fact that lot coverage is improving now, is the board allowed to take that into consideration as to the whole application when considering the other variances?
Correct, yes. So collectively, the benefit here is it's an improvement over existing conditions.
I'm talking about the lot widths, and I'm going to just turn to your exhibit here. Looking at page eight, what percentage, and I know you don't know the percentage, but what percentage of the lots here would you say are undersized as far as lot widths are concerned?
A percentage?
Approximately. I know you don't have the exact number, but over fifty percent, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Absolutely over fifty percent.
And emphasize too, the bottom lefts, I did not go into detail to categorize undersized lot width. Visually looking at that and combing the neighborhood, we're approaching more or less ninety percent.
Why, as a planner, did you focus on lot width and not lot size?
Well, the lot width, I think, is important, because when we drive down a neighborhood, we don't know how big your rear yard is. We're just looking at that, that built environment, and we're looking at that separation and that neighborhood identity and characteristic, which is why we have FAR, prevent, you know, large warehousing and so forth, but also the parachute McMansions. Neighborhood continuity and characteristics is key. It's purpose high, desirable visual environment, and that neighborhood identity. So I spend a great deal of time to identify these undersized lots by width, because we're right in character with, with the neighborhood.
And going along with that, obviously, the setbacks are reduced due to the lot width and lot size, but are the setbacks proportional to the lots that are a hundred feet in width? What I mean by that, and Craig had mentioned to me, they're prorated, so...
Yes.
Does, does that make sense what I'm asking you?
Yes, we have an undersized lot, and it's like a ratio, basically.
Right.
They're in alignment.
Okay. And then just to follow up, because now the focus is on, on setbacks and lot size. You think it's incredibly important for the board to consider the fact that the FAR is compliant, that lot coverage is compliant?
Correct. Lot coverage, I think, was the big issue, but this entire process, we were under FAR. I don't believe this house is oversized for these undersized lots.
So FAR, is it fair to say the FAR is usually the issue that you run into when you have undersized lots?
Correct, yeah. And as a planner, it's one of the thorns on my side, undersized lots, and you want to do a modest addition, and it's an FAR. And it's FAR, but it's an undersized lot, so we look at the neighborhood, you know, in that regards.
And you're not suggesting that the zoning in the, in the lot, you know, requirement that there's a hundred-foot width is inappropriate, right? You're not saying it's, that the zoning in place is inappropriate. You're not suggesting it's inappropriate.
No, I do not. I think what we have here, though, is an older neighborhood, and I think that was established at the last hearings as an older neighborhood, and these are some older homes. So I think when we have this application in front of you, this smaller home is more in alignment than a larger house for this neighborhood or this part of Bridgewater.
So you're, you're simply, you're, you're not seeking a rezoning, you're simply saying that the positive and negative criteria are met here to support a subdivision? That's what your, that's what your testimony is?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, one or two follow-up if I can. Mr. Dockerty, I think I may have forgotten this one question that I had from your testimony that made notes. Page fourteen of your submission, when you were referencing the proposed new lot or the lot, property, you used the term visual void, right?
Correct.
And so what, I'm assuming you mean vacant or a lot, the lawn and the playground equipment is a void, a visual void?
Yes.
I've never heard of the open space referenced as a visual void.
The missing tooth.
Could you, you know, describe what you, what you mean by that? What you mean by void?
Certainly. Visually, in the public realm, just like we don't know where one zone typically starts and stops, we don't really know as a general community or pedestrian what a zoning makeup is. My experience, most people don't know that until they need to know it. So driving through the neighborhood, you know, coming to the property, it just appears to be a void in the makeup and the massing, if you will, of the neighborhood. So that's what I meant by that, that missing tooth.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I want to focus on the side yard setback situation, because, you know, through the course of this hearing, you know, the lot coverage seems to have been resolved, and that's not unimportant. You know, the question of whether or not this is a buildable lot is, you know, at issue in that question, but for a moment, let's assume that it is. The property is fifty feet wide, you're proposing approximately a twenty-eight-foot wide house, and then splitting the difference with eleven-foot side yards, roughly twenty-two feet total, correct?
Which lot are we talking about? Lot twelve?
Lot twelve, correct.
I have a combined side yard setback of twenty-two feet.
Yeah, ele, and it's roughly eleven and eleven?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so fifty minus twenty-two gives you about a twenty-eight-foot wide house, right?
Correct.
Okay. Can you, can you describe to me how and why I should be seeing a fifteen-foot requirement and saying, no, eleven's okay? Like, what thought, what thought process should I be having to come to that conclusion? Because, because our, you know, our ordinance requires fifteen feet.
Right.
So you're asking for eleven. So can you walk me through the rationale for why we want fifteen? You're saying on this property, eleven's okay.
I think historical context is really important, because every lot here was fifty feet. Every one of these lots were fifty feet, and things have changed. And I don't mean to steal Mr. Doherty's thunder, it's just that he had said that he wasn't sure of the historical significance or the historical background of these lots, so...
I'm not really looking, I have a question about historical, but that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, my ordinance requires fifteen feet. You're saying this house is appropriate at eleven. I just, I feel like I need an explanation.
Maybe I can help reframe the question. Could one of the side yard setback variances be eliminated? Could the side yard setback be complied with at fifteen feet?
Yes, if we shift a house one way or the other.
Right, but then the other one would be squeezed smaller.
Was it considered, I think?
I think when we look at this, we did consider that, and that's why it's centrally...
That's actually not my question. My question is, I have an ordinance that requires fifteen feet. You have an application that says eleven feet is good enough here. Explain to me what is unique, special, and different about this piece of property? Why? what is unique, special, and different about this piece of property, why 11 is okay, and you're asking for the relief against the 15?
When we look at the proposed lot, we have some additional feet in the rear by virtue of the size. 100 by 100 will give you that 10,000 square foot, so we have, you know, about 130 going to the rear. So I think what we, what we lack in width, we're making up in depth. And when I look at the context of a detached residential zone in a neighborhood, we want certainly that outside historical residential feel. I think we have that by virtue of an extensive backyard for adequate light air and open space. The side yard setback, the separation certainly drives into the character, adequate light air and open space. I think when we look at the existing conditions here, this is, is right in line with what's was out there. As I think we were alluding to, if we shift it over, certainly, we can probably, you know-
Well, I don't, I don't think you can shift it over because if it, you know, then it would be 12 and 10, or 13 and 9, and you know, I'm not, I'm asking, you know, how do I justify that my ordinance says 15, and you're saying, but this property needs 11? Now, one of the things you said is, well, the property's particularly deep, and I'm gonna actually disagree with that. I think this property is not all that deep, because on this side of Chestnut, it's 130. On the other side of the street, it's 400, from street to street, 200 for each property. So again, however these lots were laid out and the municipal lines, I would argue that this side of this street is actually a little on the tighter side, because it's 130 versus 200.
Right.
Because of the way the streets were laid out.
And to kind of double back to the question, it was your zoning and how's released your zoning. Your zoning's 10,000 square foot lot for a square area, so that'd be 100 by 100. So we have approximately 30 feet going to the rear versus having that width. So I think it's proportional by way of keeping with that, that open space that we would typically find in a residential neighborhood. When I look at, going back to your question, balancing that, that side yard setback, I do not believe that this 11-foot separation, or the 22 collectively versus the 40, is a substantial detriment to overlook the benefit this application brings by virtue of lot coverage and providing for new housing.
Out of these setback variances compared to the 90% of the lots nearby that also have lot width issues?
As I mentioned early in my testimony, given the fact that majority, vast majority of these neighboring properties are 55-foot wide lots, that concern is existing variance throughout the neighborhood.
This isn't a unique situation. That's a generalization. Could you provide, be more specific about how many other existing homes have 11-foot setbacks?
It's not so much 11-foot setback, but as, by virtue of not conforming to the side yard setback.
Okay, non-conforming.
We would need 40 feet for both side yard setbacks. I'm testifying tonight before you, I did not see a house that was 10-foot wide in that neighborhood.
Well, we actually discussed that at the first hearing. But I'm not even necessarily talking about the 40-foot, I'm talking about the 15 and the 15. Because, you know, you're asking for two pieces of relief. One is, well, really three, the 15 on one side, the 15 on the other, and the total that does not add up to 40. I'm more focused, because I'm trying to be realistic here, because I know you can't build a 10-foot house. I just really wanna better understand what is unique, special, and different about this property that has us say, no, 11's all right. Now, what I think you might be arguing is, you're in the R-10, but this house is really, if it existed, is an R-6 and 1/2, or, you know, whatever the, whatever it is, right? But I'm still concerned, you know, how did you pick 11? I mean, like, why didn't you make the house two feet wider, and then it was only gonna be 10? Like, why was 11 okay, but like 10 wasn't?
Mr. Dougherty answered that question, since he was the one who designed the actual dimensions of the-
Yeah.
I like factors of safety when you build. So if we asked for 10, and the builder made it 9.9, we'd be back here again. So I just wanted to be a, you know, I mean, technically, we can ask for 10, and we're setting them at 11. I mean, that was the, really, the principle behind it.
Well, then, why, then why didn't you say, well, let's make them eight, and make the house even wider?
Well, I mean, if you had it 15 and 40, if we made, I don't make them 15 and 40, I'd make them 15 and 1/2 and 40 and 1/2. You know what I'm saying? It was, to me, that's the reason behind the 11. And I think, honestly, it is proportional to a 100-foot lot, if you were to shrink it in half to 50, it's proportional to the, what the township standards are.
Well, and it could be proportional, but you know, then, then, you know, you're just, you're so tight on your neighbors. And again, I know, so, many of these houses exist, and that's what people bought into, and that's, you know, it was there, and you either chose to live there or not live there. Where I'm struggling with this, and I'm, you know, I'm just being honest, is you're almost asking us to look at this as though there was a house there, you know? You know, there was a house there, you know, it's old, it's dilapidated, and we wanna make this nice new house, you know? And those, and first of all, I think you'd be before the zoning board, not the planning board, in a case like that. But, you know, I think the principles, the principles are similar. There, there isn't a house here yet. You know, if there was a house here, and it was dilapidated, and you wanted to make it a little bit bigger and a little bit more modern, again, and probably in front of the zoning board, not the planning board, I, I, I think the argument is much different. I think here, there's a threshold to get over for explaining why a house should be built here.
The real reason why we're here is because the lots are in common ownership. If the lots weren't in common ownership, if, if it was Houla House, LLC, and Houla House, not here.
But you'd be before the zoning board.
You'd be before the zoning board.
And the zoning board can be just as tough, if not tougher than us. So, you know, you know, be careful what you wish for on that one.
Mr. Cora.
And I actually, I don't mind that the house is centered. And I, you know, I don't think that we should be trading a foot here for a foot there, because then, then, you know, there's a certain unfairness, because, you know, right, you know, right now, there's common ownership, but if we grant this, there won't be common ownership anymore. I, I think the question that you ask is very fair. You know, obviously, a 10-foot wide house is not, is not viable. That's, that, no one would build it, no one would wanna buy it, no one would wanna live there. But, you know, instead of a 28-foot house, is it viable at 26 feet, or 24 feet, so that at least there's a little bit more room on the sides? You're a couple feet further away, and you're closer to the side yard setback requirement.
So I just wanna point out the side yard setback. The minimum side yard requirement for one of them is 15. We're proposing 11. That, that four-foot difference, I don't see a substantial detriment. Now, collectively-
It's 15 on each side.
Collectively, the minimum side yard for both would be 40, so we jump.
I'm willing to actually, I'm, this is just my, my opinion. I don't know if I speak for the board. I'm more, much more troubled by the 15 than the 40, because 50 minus 40 is 10. A 10-foot house is not viable, okay? But, something, you're proposing 28 with 11 and 11. What would be conforming on that measure would be 15, 15, and 20. Now, a 20-foot wide house, I don't know if that's viable or not. I'm suggesting maybe there's a number that's between 20 and 28, so that you're closer to compliance, at least with the 15 on each side. I know you're not gonna be able to meet the 40 total, but I'm just trying to understand-
I misread that. I thought-
You know, you know, could, you know, could a viable home that someone would wanna build and live in be constructed somewhat closer to 20 feet wide, so that you could go 15 and 15?
I'll just add to this. You know, we had the applicant here at the last hearing, she testified that she purchased this in 2019. The existing zoning existed in 2019, and the planner is here to address the bulk variances. And so, you know, my assumption here, and there's nothing wrong with capitalism, I support it, and someone is wanting to invest in a property in improvement, it's vastly improved, and that's a great thing. But this, you know, if the, if the applicant did not know what the zoning was, well, that's not the township's fault. And this is, this is an applicant who wants to subdivide, to build a home, and to sell both, and there's nothing wrong with that. But there's an ordinance, and you've gotta, in my opinion, you gotta do a better job convincing us, convincing me, that there's a reason other than allowing the property owner to subdivide and build a house to sell. That's, that's really, that's, that's, that's how I see this.
With this subdivision comes an overall improvement to the, to the site, by way of lot coverage. We spent two nights discussing stormwater management, flooding, drainage. This subdivision is a benefit to what those current conditions are in the lot coverage. So by way of granting this subdivision, it's not capitalism, that, that positive investment to the site is also felt throughout the neighborhood, which, which is advancement of, of that C2 criteria, which is that also, again, the better zoning alternative.
I guess what I'm trying to say, just to move this thing along, and I'm not trying to negotiate, I'm just throwing out an idea. Is a 24-foot wide house that is, you know, centered, so now you're 13 and 13, you're, still need variance, but it's, it's less, is a 24-foot wide house, and then potentially a little deeper, to give you the square footage, is that, is that economically viable?
When I look at-
Would someone wanna build it, and would someone wanna live there?
I don't know, I don't know the economic viability. I've seen small houses, I've seen large houses, but when I look at this location and what's on Lot 11, I think the proportion and that, that transition into the older neighborhood, I think we're right on par with where it needs to be.
Putting economics aside, looking at all of the lots that are undersized, is this consistent with the setbacks and the, with, for example, Lot 14 and 15? Would you say the setbacks for a lot- And Craig has an exhibit up there, if you wanna reference it, I think it's a- Let's, can we mark this exhibit? It's, we can mark this as Exhibit A4. Aerial view, is that okay, Craig? Aerial, aerial?
Slide 10 of my exhibit, I think, is a good reflection of that side yard setback. And in fact, that lot, I believe it's 14, the house is actually kind of sitting sideways in the middle of the lot as well. So by, by way of setbacks, I, you know, reflecting what we just heard here, I think we're, we're a little bit more generous than our neighboring properties that are on smaller lots. And going back for that side yard setback, again, we have a larger house on Lot 11. I think, you know, for proportion and transition, you know, that, that, that middle piece, I think that house is right where it needs to be. We have a four-foot side yard setback on the minimus by four feet. I do not think that's a substantial detriment to overlook the benefits that come with this subdivision by way of that lot coverage and that drainage issue.
All right, let me ask the question slightly differently, because I'm also concerned about the person that's gonna be living in Lot, Lot 13. And, and, again, when we make, when we provide relief, it's forever. You know, it's not the person that lives there now, I mean, it's, it's forever. And I know that that house is not exactly, you know, square on the lot. You know, it's, it's a little bit off kilter from the property lines. What is the distance from what I'll call the front, as you're looking at, at the existing house, the front left corner to the property line? I mean, it's about the width of the driveway that's there, right? Because that driveway pretty much goes right up to the potential property line if, if, if we do this subdivision, correct?
I don't have the measurements or scale in front of me, and I'm quite honest, I-
But I mean, the answer, I think, is gonna be roughly the width of that, of that driveway.
I'm, I have no idea what lot we're talking about at the moment. Are we talking about?
I'm talking about existing lot-
13?
13.
Okay.
Okay, so that, you know, the existing house that's there, the measure, and again, I know, it's not exact, and everything isn't exactly perpendicular here, but if you measure from that front, looking at the house, the left corner, if you go to the property line, it's, it's about the width of the driveway, right?
13.7 feet.
All right, 13.7. I'm sorry to say this, but like, every foot counts. When you're talking about being that close on a neighbor, every foot does count, in my view. And, you know, I, you know, without, without getting to a, to a, literally, a trade-off of one foot for another, I would challenge the applicant to say, could a house that's another couple feet less wide, giving slightly more breathing room on each side, be economically and, you know, still viable for this space?
From the applicant's perspective, I think we've given so much as it relates to lot coverage, that to, to save on, and I understand you're saying every foot matters, but to save one foot or two feet in a neighborhood where this is routinely, or at least systematic, where the, this is consistent with the setbacks in the neighborhood, despite the zoning that's in place. It's just, it's, it's too much of an ask for, for the applicant to, to change what is already a very small, although consistent with the neighborhood, as our planner has testified too, a house of this size is-
Well, then, let me ask the question differently. Why didn't you go with a house that was 34 feet wide, and, you know, we only want an eight-foot side yard on each side?
I think we were trying to match the ratio, so if the lot was conforming, we were trying to come up with, and I, and Craig can answer this, but we were trying to come up with a proper ratio, so that the setbacks matched what was in the existing neighborhood, and also, if it were 100-foot wide lot, we were trying to come up with the proper ratio based upon the ordinance standard. So the, I think the ordinance standards, and Mr. Dougherty is correct, if I'm wrong, it was taken into consideration when you came up with 11 feet versus nine feet. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So you're essentially saying, you, you built, you're proposing to build a house that is appropriate to this specific property, which is essentially an R-6 and 1/2, if one actually existed. If R-6 and 1/2 existed as a zone, and everything was sort of proportional, you're saying that's why, that's why we've come up with this plan?
I, I think that the applicant is looking at the piece of property and the surrounding neighborhood, and is trying to come up with, with a reasonable building footprint that, that makes sense. You're bringing up economics. I'm trying to stay away from economics, because I, because I think the testimony that you've heard is that this is really more about being conducive and in line with the character of the neighborhood.
Well, I use the phrase economics, just, just, not, not because I'm looking for anybody to make money or not make money. At a certain point, a proposal is viable or it's not viable. That's, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying, I'm not looking for anybody to maximize an amount of economic investment. I'm saying, at a certain point, a, a, a project is not viable and wouldn't be built. That's what I'm, that's why I use that phrase.
If I, if I may, the existing for, for combined is 40 side yard setback. Both side yards have to-
Right, which clearly you can't meet.
So if we were to cut that in half, that's 20. We're given 22. So I, for ratio proportion, back in that contest, I think we're right on par, if, if we really do kind of scale this down. And I think that's what, what we're trying to put out there, that when we looked at this, this, this was taken into consideration. And, and to, you know, again, going back to the conversation, the house, if we look at Slide 10 of the exhibit, you'll see that our neighboring houses to the north, 11 and 10, their lots are larger, more massy, more scale, sort of put a thinner, skinnier house. I think that kind of defeats the, the purpose of, of, you know, what, what we try to do here as that transition from the larger lots to the existing, you know, neighborhood with, with a more appropriate ratio house, if you will, within relation to that 50- to that 50-foot width.
She wants to start somewhere, right? Just because it exists somewhere else doesn't mean that we can just put it there. I'm very concerned, yeah, we talked about the stormwater management, right now removing the trees, relocating them, possibly not having a solution, adding privacy between current houses right next to Lot 12, right, which is a bigger lot, right, which we just talked about was a bigger lot. If I were that home, right, that I got used to all of this privacy that I now have, and it's not, and it's not conforming, I'd be, I'd be very frustrated that there's not ability to have wiggle room and to make privacy, more privacy, so even if it's a couple of feet, there's something that's saying, I'm willing to work with the existing, the, currently there. And again, he's not saying maybe 20 feet, he's saying suggesting 24. I, I know she owns the other home and rents it out, I know she can provide it to your son or somebody that's been helping the housing to build, I'm not as concerned between 12 and, 12 and 13, I'm more concerned on the other, on the other side.
That adjacent neighbor has a giant evergreen tree in there, essentially there.
It's not enough.
Okay.
I won't appreciate them, if there's some change to that specifically.
By way of screening?
Privacy.
Privacy.
Even there's privacy or the home is just over, right, that there's more of a side yard between the two, I, I won't say that.
I'm also very concerned as well with the privacy and the shrubbery, the lack of shrubbery and the, the non-potential for being able to put something to separate the, or the transition of the neighborhood from Lot 12 to Lot 11. I still see a problem, especially Board Planner, Ms. Sarmad pointed out before, we're going to be seeing the foundation of the new proposed structure, so we're going to have to do something about also masking that foundation that's going to be exposed. So it's not exactly.
No, we don't have a landscape plan.
I have a solution, possibly. We could move the, the home over to create a 15-yard setback as it relates to the adjacent lot, Lot 10, move it closer to Lot 13. The setback would obviously, would, would be less between lots 12 and 13. Again, not inconsistent with the testimony we heard about the surrounding neighborhood, however, we're addressing the concerns as it relates to privacy for Lot 10.
Privacy is one thing, but I also feel as though, you know, we're, we're talking about the lots and structures that are being referenced and compared to, those were built more than half a century ago, maybe. Though the neighborhood itself has kind of grown out of that throughout the decades and, and, you know, you brought the missing tooth analogy before, I, I don't feel as though there's that much of a missing tooth there anymore, especially with the neighborhood. As you, you know, drive to the north, it kind of, it, there's a transition now. So we're trying to force something that maybe doesn't necessarily belong there today in age. It's, it's, it's changing the, the neighborhood's density, the neighborhood's population, the amount of cars, the traffic, the parking. So I, these are all questions that I have in my mind, I'm trying to wrap around it. So, you know, Councilman Kirsch brought up some good points before regarding, you know, what, what things would look like, you know, as, as it comes to, you know, setbacks and whatnot, but, you know, I, I see other questions regarding the, the neighborhood's density itself, so these are things that I still have unanswered as well.
By neighborhood density, I think we're, we're right on par. I don't think this is overdevelopment for, for the neighborhood, it's a single-family dwelling, it's a small modest home, it's not a two-family, multifamily proposed here. I think the density is right, right on par, and, and I would just like to remind the board, with this subdivision comes that, that, carrying up that ailment of, of that lot coverage and drainage, you know, we do have a 10-foot easement on our side of the property, we're proposing 11, I'm not a, a landscape architect, I don't know if one foot's viable to put, you know, an arborvitae, I, I don't think it would be, but, you know, we just, we said we'll shift it over, we'll have more landscaping on that side, but I think the benefits of this application outweigh the detriments here by way of that side yard setback. We're, we're, we're four feet shy of what's required, I, I don't believe that's a substantial detriment here.
Four feet on each side, eight feet.
And that, the house that we are talking about is elevated, and that side yard setback is, is large, I don't think we're right on top of a, a large, larger home, I do think we have adequate visual separation there. And, and then the smaller lots, you know, that's that quaint, small neighborhood feel that this, that this R10 zone has.
I personally would like to make it work, but this is very trying, the, the entire application to me is very trying.
Comment if I may. Looking at history, you know, we've got to take into account, things happened in the past, a lot of those properties are 6,500 square feet. Somehow zoning was imposed on top of that of 10,000 square feet. I don't know how that happened, but are we asking people to comply with a requirement that can't be complied with? Are we making them, oh gosh, I don't know how.
Obsolete. Functionally obsolete.
Yeah, I mean, is it functional? I mean, can we ask them to do something to comply with, something that can't be complied I just don't understand, the 6,500 feet and then on top of that, Bridgewater imposes a 10,000 square foot zone. Is that something we should look at in the future when we're doing, upgrading the?
Well, I think, I, I think the overall.
You look at for a master plan review.
Yes.
I, I think the overall answer, and, you know, I sat on the zoning board for eight years, we saw a lot of applications in the Bradley Gardens neighborhood because almost anything you want to build is going to be non-compliant. That's why we have a zoning board. Now, we're here before a planning board because of the necessity of the subdivision. But, you know, taking that aside, this has essentially been a zoning board hearing, the types of questions, the type of, of concerns that we have. And, you know, I, I think it's a question to ask, but I think that typically speaking, you know, you're not, you're, you don't want to spot, you can't spot zone, you can't say, all right, well, these eight properties in a row are R5, and then, you know, these over here are R6 and 1/2, and these are R10. I, I don't, I don't know that's viable. I, I think that the, the way it's intended to work is you are in an R10, even if you're non-compliant, if you want to do something, you have to go before a zoning board. Again, this one notwithstanding because of the, of the subdivision.
And as an aside, I grew up in a city, the properties were 25 feet wide, the houses were 23 feet wide, and you could reach out and touch the house next to it.
There's, there was a lot of discussion this evening about comparisons to existing conditions, existing structures. This is the reality on the ground. That home on Lot 13 exists, it exists perfectly so as to create another lot, so it is not like we're, we're taking down the existing conditions and creating two new lots completely out of whole cloth, not in continuity with the surrounding neighborhood or your ordinance. What's happening here is that there's a home on Lot 13 and, and essentially a vacant lot that is exist, it exists in this manner because of the previous zoning. It's, it's not, it's not like we're trying to create something new here. You're not going to see applications like this because there aren't situations, existing situations or conditions that exist like this. We're here because the unique situation in 2024, that you have a vacant lot next to, you know, a, a home that the testimony this evening suggests belongs there, it exists there, it, it should be there, it's, that, that, I just think it's important to distinguish between, or at least talk about existing conditions versus proposed conditions. This is the situation that we're here with, so we're trying to make the best of the situation, especially considering the fact that Lot 13 just underwent a full renovation, especially considering what it used to look like.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to jump in, I, I haven't, you know, had a chance, the professionals haven't had a chance to come in, but I did want to comment, I think the board, oh, it's not on? Is that better? Okay, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Sarmad. Why don't we take some questions from our professionals, please?
I just, I just wanted to jump in because I think a few questions have been good. Mr. McGura, in relation to your question about how the zoning came to be, I had actually posed the line of questioning to Mr. Stires at the last meeting, and they got deferred to the planner, and I think Mr. Papas had asked some of the similar questions I had asked about, did you look at when the zone changed? Did you look at, you know, some of the site history, some of the zoning history? Because I think it does help tell story, and it's kind of ironic that we're sitting here saying maybe we should look back at the zoning, because that's probably what already happened. So if you look at the, even the online code, it tells you when the zone was changed, by ordinance 9133 in 1991, in 2005, in 2006, and I was hoping the applicant would look into what those ordinances did change, because I have a feeling, and I didn't look into it, I think it's the applicant's opportunity to do that, I have a feeling that the zoning probably was 5,000 square feet minimum lot area, and something triggered the town to look at that and say, look at this area, look at the development, look at the patterns, whether it be zoning board approvals or applications or variances, and say, let's make it 10,000 square feet. Yes, we're going to zone some of these sites into non-conformity, but they're existing homes, and they're already maxed out on the previous. I have a feeling that's probably what happened. So it's ironic that we're looking back saying, maybe we should change it back, because I think it was done for a reason. And I think that history, if the applicant had provided that, probably would have told the story a little bit better. And I want to be really careful about how we're saying that Lot 12 is vacant, because it was enjoyed by Lot 13, it was utilized as portion, as an entire lot, as a single-family home with a pool as its backyard, because a garage that was almost the same size of the house existed on the property. So I'm going to be really careful about how we talk about what should be on Lot 12, because maybe in 1991 or 1990 before the ordinance, maybe there should have been a house there based on the zoning. But we are in 2024, and the zone has been changed and does have regulations that are stipulating the variances that are required tonight. So I think that's really important. I think the aerial tells a very good story as well as far as the type of houses, and you don't get the full picture until you're actually on the ground and you do a site visit, and you see, oh, those other homes that are on non-conforming lots that have less lot width and lot area are actually, may actually be deeper and utilize the, the length of the lots, which this house I don't think, or the proposed house, doesn't do. They're actually not as high, they're about a story and a half, so when you look at the context, I think we have to be really careful about saying, this is going to fit in exactly with what's there, because it's a two-story home, and it's 32 and 1/2 feet, and I don't think any of the existing homes match that. So when we're talking about matching, we're talking about fixing, filling in the loose, the missing tooth, we have to be careful about how we're generalizing without the full picture, without exhibits that show that, without things that back it up. And I just want to be careful that the testimony we're hearing is also the, the full picture with that. And I think the, the age of the homes around in the area matter. I think the, the development context, the depth of the homes, the height of the homes matter, if we're going to talk about matching, or we're going to talk about the development context, which I don't think we've seen in exhibits that really detail that. But that's, that's basically what my questions were going to be for, for the planner, were going to be, did you look at, did you do a detailed analysis of these things? What's the percentage of lots that aren't, are non-conforming? What's the percentage of, of homes that were built, you know, in the last decade? When was the zoning changed? What was it, why was it changed, et cetera? Because that, that would give a lot more backup to the variance, I think, that are being requested, because it is 2024, and the zoning is what it is. I hope that was helpful.
So, Dori, I'm just curious, if you took a look at lots 14 and 15 with regards to the dimensions, as well as some of that period that we're looking at?
Give me one second.
Do you have a lot that are right above or, Lot 13?
14 and 15.
So 14 and 15.
14 and 15, yes.
I'm curious if you've done some of the calculations on the sizing of those lots.
On the page six, you'll see that they are 50 foot wide and they are 30.65 feet in depth.
So if you go to like Slide 14, is that?
Okay.
I mean, I looked it up, I just looked it up. The, the lot 14 is 23 by 46, about 1,015 and 15, I have a minor, whatever it's a version, it is 23 by 46, it's 23 by 46. And then taking a look at the property next to it, that is obviously on a, or, or, or the actual.
15 by 200?
And I think it's really good indication, but, you know, we, we gauge that that was about. But as we think about pre-existing conditions, and I know this has been brought up by Councilman Kirsch, still I think there is a pre-existing condition about the 20, you know, having a smaller footprint in terms of the width and a deeper, so I would really encourage the applicant to take a look at that.
These are bigger houses.
The applicant gave you permission, the applicant willing to reduce the house, to rent it, rent the house. So what would be the, like, what would be the new?
26.
26 by 40?
28 by 38 now.
We already stipulated that if we can construct anything in the easement area, any fence, any buffering, we'll do so. Even before this, we would, we would agree to.
Right now, there's a fence there, but it's the lot to the north, I believe, that the owner.
So then you proposed dimensions would be about 26 by 40.
26 by 40, yeah.
It's a little smaller than the, I'm just looking at this, and I don't know if we put it in there, but that's what's at 28 by 40. That's what we're on.
All squares for the BS.
Could be less.
Probably, I don't, I don't know, I'm not doing the calculations, but I would imagine that the, the footprint would be equal to the same square footage, but we would agree to reduce width 26. I think that's why you probably said 41.
Yeah. If we were to keep everything all.
Yeah, we would keep the, the total square footage of the footprint the same.
Lot coverage essentially, if they are.
Yeah, all the other.
Yeah.
Correct.
And a deficit of three versus four.
I would, you had, you had, you had, you had easement. I would have had, I would have represented you that we would, that, 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 that would have been.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure that I understand the, this, this new proposal. So the, the property is obviously still 50 feet wide, the house is now 26 feet wide, leaving 24, but you're proposing that it be not exactly centered? Where are you distributing the 24 feet of side yard?
15 feet would be, look to the property in the north, 15 plus side yard setback, property in the north, nine yard setback, 15.
Nine foot.
Right, nine.
Well, you can get for the buffer.
We also agreed to put proper screening in with the increase of the 15 yard setback. It's the location that, I don't know, I'm starting on the, whether it will be closer to the property line, if we can, if we're able to define that easement and place up the fence in the easement area. I mean, is the fence on the northern lot, if it's in the easement area? So the, so the fence, I mean, if the fence exists on the northern lot, if it's in the easement area, so if that's any indication as to what we're able to do, we could bring the fence and place it against property line, follow process.
If, well, since the easement doesn't exist, we are going to create. Well, since the easement doesn't exist, we are going to create it on our side, so we could put stipulations in there, what we can and can't do, provided the township is okay with it. I mean, if we could put at least landscaping in there, put that in the verbiage of the easement that will exist going forward.
I have no issue with that.
What, what, what's the, what's the purpose of the easement?
There is currently a drainage pipe that essentially parallels the property line.
Okay.
We've looked, Mike has looked, Anthony Gallo has looked, I think Tom Genova might have delved into it a very little bit, nothing.
If the board approves this, and that's an if, I would certainly want to ensure that the property owner would be responsible for maintaining any of the drainage structures within that easement, and that the township has no responsibility to maintain it. That is consistent with what we have asked other applicants.
That put the pipe in?
No, that, that, that a drainage easement that is on a private property is the responsibility, the maintenance of any drainage structure within an easement is the property owner's responsibility, not the township of Bridgewater's.
But it is draining a public road.
I understand that.
And it's also just immediately north of our, like I said, it's not on our property, it's immediately north of it.
I understand that, we're talking about your app, your client's property.
Right.
That's what we have done, there have been other instances of subdivision applications where that, that condition was included for one, two or three lot subdivisions. I remember that, right, Mr. Peck?
Pipe's not even on our property, though.
Yeah, I mean, I think in cases where there's established drainage facilities, the requirement is to make sure, like, the inlets are clear and things like that. I don't know that we've imposed, Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, but an affirmative obligation to, like, you know, if the pipes get clogged, that the property owner has to.
That's, that's what I'm asking for.
We have required that, I can think of, I can think of two applications. One actually had pipes in the ground, new pipes that were being, well, existing pipes that were being replaced in kind, and another one was an open drainage conveyance way. Those applicants did, this is a little bit unique, in that there's really no formal, other than maybe the rear corner of the lot, that the stormpipe, according to Craig's survey, is actually shown underground, but on the adjacent lot. But certainly to Mr. Papas's point, I think the applicant, it would be reasonable to expect that they maintain on the surface of the ground, any lands within the easement that may impact or affect the drainage functionality. But there's no, there's no drainage structure in the formal sense that they would have to maintain, but I think it's a reasonable request.
Keep the area clear and.
Right.
I don't even think there's an ability for us to grant access, it's not on our property. I don't.
I heard Mr. Stier saying that you were going to create a 10-foot easement on the north side of your property.
There is supposedly, on the tax map, there is shown a 10-foot easement.
Okay.
It doesn't exist.
It's 20, isn't it?
It's 10 foot on our side, 10 on the other.
Okay.
But according to our research, it doesn't exist. So we are giving the opportunity to the township to clear that up.
But we can obviously only can, we can only grant an easement with respect to our property. And the pipe that we're all speaking about isn't located on our property, despite the fact that the easement is located on our property.
I understand, okay. All I'm saying is that we've had situations where there are drainage issues, and property owners like to give the township easements. And then the assumption is the township has some responsibility to maintain that easement. I deal with it every day, all over town, and because of the challenges of drainage issues, I am just asking that if this is approved, that there be a condition that any drainage structure within the easement, that is the response, would be the responsibility of the property owner.
Up to the property line.
That's, that's all I'm asking. If there's no structure, then there should be no issue, but there is no reason that the township should be responsible for maintaining a drainage structure on private property. That's the, that's the only point I'm making.
I could just make an announcement, it's 9:56. Just a reminder, no new testimony will be taken after 10 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Papas.
So, I can, the applicant can agree to that, it's, it's a moot point, because there is no drainage structure, to my knowledge, on the applicant's property. So if there is, then the applicant can agree to that. I don't know if that addresses the question?
And if we get to that point, we can create appropriate.
Mr. Burr, I'd like to give you an opportunity to ask your questions as well, if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I actually don't have any questions of this witness. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. Are there any other questions from members of our board? Are there any questions for any members of the public regarding Mr. Dari's testimony?
Not a question.
That, that will need to be reserved till later. If it's a question that's directly related to the testimony that was just given, you may come and pose the question.
Have you changed the property home across the street? The pipe that's up against the fence?
I'll need you to come to the podium.
You'll have to come up and be sworn in, you're giving testimony now.
And please ask in the form of a question.
Yeah, hold on, but first, before we get going, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in the course of this hearing will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, it will.
Thank you, could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Mary, Mrs. Mary Pires, P-I-R-R-E-S. I live at 150 Chestnut Street, directly across the street from the home that wants to be passed. Now, I have to turn it into a question. The pipe that's running along the fence, the original, I've lived in, on, in my home for 47 years. The pipe goes across the street, we put it, we had someone put a pipe in our property running from Linden Street. And then Mr. Russo took the original owner of the home, put another pipe going alongside his fence, which I understand is two feet of his property on that side of the fence. So if you plan on removing it, it's going to cause my home, my backyard, to flood from Linden Street. And we had it, it was okayed by the, I guess it was the zoning board back then.
Is the question, are we going to remove it? No.
But are you removing the one that's across the street?
We're not going to remove any pipe.
Okay.
They're not testifying to that, I don't think any.
I think it came up because we were talking about the non-privacy screening.
Right, which.
And you still need to put, and escape our fence there with it.
I understand, I understand. The other question is, I don't know how I'm going to put this in a question, that property floods, if you were to come with our 100-day rains, it's flooded. And I know for a fact, Mr. Russo, again, and the second owner, who she had bought it from, had filled it in several times, the property's been filled in. I'm not an engineer, years ago, my husband was told that when you dig far enough and you hit water, you're going to break up the water line. And if he found water, if water was found in the ground, no matter how deep it is, it's going to come back up.
Ms. Paris is a general commentary.
Okay, I'm sorry, but that's.
Well, no, I mean, potentially, the question is, have the, maybe this is for a different, a different witness, has the engineering considered the concerns that have just been raised?
Because there are springs, there's 12 springs in my backyard. Then if we, we wanted to add on another room to the house in the back, and the town, you didn't let us, it was the zoning board.
Because of the location of the water table at that spot.
Because of the water table, that's right. Because it's all clay, you know, for yourselves, no matter where you live in the township. But just as a thought.
I think to answer your question, do we consider, the page four or five of the plans that were stated?
Thank you.
With the additional lawn inlet that would describe the property lines to collect that stormwater, so there isn't that flood there. We also talked about the slight elevation of the new proposed home, and, you know, working with the engineer corps of education to heat those arbovites potentially more. I think the essence for that drainage issue, that easement, as a planner, and I'm doing this for a little bit, the concern typically, from my experience in hearing this banter, is the roots and how they would impact that, that underground pipe, that drainage. So it's not that we don't want to plant more trees and help improve that, we have to be cognizant of what's underneath of us. So the pipe is on the other property, we can plan on our side, as we discussed, we want, we want to improve this.
How deep, how deep is the pipe, again?
I don't know how deep it varies, I don't know what the elevations are, the pitches and the whole, you know, that matters out of the league.
Arbovites and things like that, I don't think that root system would go that profound.
I want to see more of that, they use.
Please, come forward.
My name is Cheryl Rauketi, spelt R-A-U-K-E-T-E. I'm the owner of Lot 11, which is a lot directly north of you. There was some discussion previously about removing those trees in the middle of the lot next to us. My question really is around the large pine tree that sits between our house and that lot. That pine tree is probably over 100 years old, and probably sucks up about 10 times as much water as those arbovites. My concern is in building that property so close to this tree, this tree will probably die, will have to be chopped down. So has the zoning board considered what will happen to my tree? And, or is it likely that this, if this tree does not survive, it'll be replaced?
Right now, the, this section of the meeting is just for you to ask.
Well, actually, no.
The veteran's testimony, you can afford these questions when the applicant is done putting there.
Okay, then I'll ask him a question. Have you considered my tree and the impact of this building property on my tree? And I'm likely having to actually chop that tree down.
I will say, you don't want to hurt your tree, I think we talked about shifting it even further with your tree, you know, as we said before, so, sorry. Confident of that additional 15 feet, plus that 10-foot buffer, you know, easement, nothing going in there, I think the tree, though I am a land use in case, you know, planning, planner here, I'm not a landscape architect or a gardener, I think the tree would be all right.
These are probably the, this is probably the question for, for engineer, but just to point out, our, the house is, the house is now going to be compliant with the setback, so.
Yes.
That answers your question, we're now compliant.
So it, but we'll have it, so it's basically right next to the tree in the trunk, and this is a big tree, so I expect these roots are way down, so any digging is likely to build a basement in there, is likely to impact this tree.
Just, just, just for clarity, so you're, you're the house, it's like a tan, tan color immediately?
Yeah, it's the, it's the biggest house on the street, and it's right.
And you're talking about the tree that, at least I'm looking at page three of the handout, it looks to be roughly halfway between your property and the property line?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that the one you're talking about?
It's taller than our house.
Okay.
It's probably the largest tree.
But is it accurate, it looks from the picture that it's about halfway between your house and the property line?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, because what, what we're now talking about is this house, if built, would be another 15 feet from the, the property line. So it, your house is dramatically closer to that tree than this proposed house.
And my concern really is, is this tree will come down in a storm if you start digging around its roots, because its roots are visible at the property line. I'd also just like to clarify that, you know, my house is probably on more than 100, you said it was 105, you say your 50-foot yacht lots and width are consistent with the rest of the houses in the, in the area. Yeah, my house is definitely not on a 50-foot wide lot.
Yeah, identified your lot as one of the few that are 100 feet wide.
Yeah. So when you say generally consistent, I think you're right next to the biggest property in the street. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, that will close the public portion of the meeting for this witness. Mr. Silbert, I believe we've run out of time for any other witnesses for this evening.
I have any other witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
Public comment, though.
We do have public comment, oh, sure.
Any other comments from our board? At this time, I'd like to open up to any members of the public that wish to comment on any testimony that was given this evening.
Comment on this, are you going to, your SEMA's in it, because you got a notice, but it's not on the agenda.
It's to come tonight, to reset here this whole time.
No, they are carried to May 21.
SEMA did not give proper notice.
We, but that's, we didn't send that out. The applicant sent it out without.
But that's the deficiency.
Thank you.
And, you know, Mr. Chairman, since we are, you know, in a scheduling conversation, you know, independent of, of proper notice for that case, we now have some amount of time that's going to still be necessary for this Chestnut Street case. We then have not tonight heard, you know, the other case we anticipated. I just want to make sure that, you know, we have a reasonable expectation of how much we're going to be able to accomplish on the 21st.
I'm representing the Gerardo application, so, just before I get ahead of myself, the person from the audience that was speaking, from the public, was not speaking about the Gerardo application, is that correct? It's a different application?
That's different.
Just want to make sure. So you're, you're, the suggestion is to carry it to the 21st, I'm just checking my, my calendar here. I personally have a conflict that evening. I could probably get somebody from my office to cover the conflict. I, I'm okay. I just have to check with my team. Okay, the 21st is good. For Gerardo, thank you.
For Gerardo?
Yes.
That be sufficient to hear comments, both for the board and the public, for Hula as well?
So 21st works for Ms. Haas. I did just want to point out, because it seems like we're coming to a potential close here, that, you know, I don't know if there's time just to make a very quick statement, but the applicant tried very hard to work with the board based upon the board's comments last weekend, last hearing. The applicant came back, presented plans, and made concessions more than what the board had even requested originally. So it's, I think frustrating from the applicant's standpoint, because it seems like when we, as soon as we address the one issue raised from the board, or this issue from the board, the goalposts are moved to then address another issue. And I understand that there's a lot of variance relief, or not so much, so a lot, but there are multiple variances that we're seeking. So if we are going to come back, and now that we've heard the testimony of all of Ms. Haas's applicants, before we conclude, you know, it would be very helpful to know the outstanding issues that the board may have. But I did want to make that representation. Again, I know the board can probably appreciate that we made so many changes, so.
I, I, I'm sorry. I know the hour is late. We've all been here a long time, and maybe there's a level of frustration. But I do need to object to the phrase, "The goalposts are moving." There is nothing that has moved, other than our desire to make sure that we represent what is right for Bridgewater. There's no movement of goalposts, there's no changing of rules. You know, you know, if that's an opinion, everyone's entitled to an opinion. But I can't, I can't let that, that just be stated without being countered. Have we been demanding? Absolutely. Has the applicant shown flexibility? Absolutely. But, you know, again, I don't, I don't think that it's an accurate portrayal that the rules are changing or the goalposts are moving.
Altsman, I think you're doing your, your job as a, as a planning board member, as a council member, and as a resident of Bridgewater, and I understand that. But, you know, the board can certainly appreciate that it costs a lot of money, a lot of energy, for somebody to come here and present a minor subdivision of this nature to the board. And that's a business decision that the applicant has made. But it's just, the applicant spent a lot of time to address the lot coverage concern. So, again, you're looking at...
No, no, I've been using as an example, and not to turn this into a debate, but, you know, lot coverage, we talked about, we covered it. But then, we got into a conversation about side yards. You know, I'm not going to accept, well, you already, we already gave in so much on, on lot coverage, well, you know, you know, now just give us what we want on side yards. I don't, I don't accept that. I think we addressed certain things, and then in this hearing, we addressed certain things. And, you know, again, if this has become far more complicated than the applicant anticipated, that's just the way the process sometimes happens. But, you know, you know, I don't, you know, I don't think, I don't think I or anyone on this board should be hampered by, well, we already beat, you know, beat one area to death, you know, why are you asking us so many questions about this area?
I understand where you're coming from. And I don't think it's, it's not a matter of trying to evaluate the application on its whole. That's, that's not what I'm suggesting. You should evaluate the application on its whole. I'm more so saying that if there's an issue that the applicant can address, or multiple issues, it would be helpful.
And that's, and that's a very fair question. And I'll, I'll answer the question that is on the board. Certainly, I don't know what the public is going to say. But I am satisfied that all the issues that are of concern to me have at least been placed on the table. Again, I don't know if everyone else on the board feels maybe not satisfied yet. There are still some open questions. But I believe that any, that the issues have all been stated.
I also, I think I'd like to support Mr. Kers. In fact, what happened is, is almost like a real difficult situation was that, you know, zoning board changes the requirement, and as Ms. Sarmed says, so there is difficulties itself is placing a house, you know, 20 feet, 24 feet, or 28 feet. At least, you know, you have accommodated that one. That is very nice of you. So ultimately, at least, I think as far as we know, we have addressed everything, probably covered everything. Also, you have actually accommodated that one. So hopefully, you know, next 21st, it will be quicker. Hope. Nothing else will come. Again, we don't know what public will ask, so that's a different thing. But thank you for the opportunity. And also, basically, we can understand your frustration also. You know, I would have been, in fact, I was telling her, I would have been even probably, you know, left by the, by half an hour before. But anyway, nevertheless, thank you for at least staying with us.
I'll just say that, as Mr. Kersha said, I've presented my concerns and my questions. They have been responded to. It doesn't necessarily mean I'm satisfied with the answers, but they've, I've, I've addressed and put on the table everything that I'm concerned about. And then regarding the first hearing, the applicant was the first witness. She addressed what was appropriate. Then Mr. Stires, and he addressed what was appropriate. And then we were told there'd be a planner to address the variances. And so I think that was, that's obviously been the progression of the discussion. And the issues that have been raised tonight were not raised previously, for the most part, because Mr. Stires was the primary witness last time.
Thank you, Mr. Papas. Each application that comes before the board is unique, and I think that most of the members here this evening would agree that this is excessively unique in this scenario. But we do appreciate the work that Ms. Haas has done up to this point. And I think most of our concerns have at least been brought to the table. And are there any other comments? I'd like to give Mr. Silbert one last chance to provide any other questions or comments.
I'll, I'll conclude by saying that I do appreciate the flexibility of the board members to throw out possible solutions, because it does give the applicant something to work with. And we're doing the best we can, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silbert.
Is it, does the board, we were not planning on submitting additional documents unless the board feels that it's absolutely necessary, which is, would be helpful if...
It'd be helpful for me if you could give a bullet point of...
I can do that.
...shifting, just, you know, I'm thinking of putting the resolution together. So if you have to do the bullet point thing, where do you guys stand right now with your site plan?
I'd be happy to do that, and I...
Can we present, we can update the rendering. Since, you know, we updated the plans, we didn't...
Whatever you think is best. Just the 10 days in advance.
Well, the other thing is, we updated the plans and didn't get an updated review. So I think it would be just as good doing an updated exhibit, and we can come back and flush it all out with everybody.
So to answer that... Because of the timing, what I will commit to doing is that I will send Mr. Peck a bullet point list. I can set, I can send an updated zone table as soon as possible. And then at the next hearing, it'll be presented as a supplemental exhibit, as opposed to being presented or submitted 10 days in advance. It'll be on the board so that we can see the changes and visualize it. It's just the...
Ms. Sarmed, Mr. Burr, does that work for you?
That's fine.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Silbert.
Thank you.
This meeting will be carried to the 21st of May without further notice.
Correct. No further notice will be given on the Haas application.
Will they be first?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, do you want to just also specify what we can reasonably expect? Is there'll be, we'll have summation, and then public comment?
Correct.
And then board comment and deliberation, correct? That's what's left?
Whatever, chairman's pleasure. Yes.
Okay. And then we will go to the, the other case that we did not hear tonight. And then we may go to the other matter, if it can be handled quickly and if their notice is appropriate. Okay.
And also, for any public who is here on the Gerardo application involving Mountain Top Road, that will also be carried to May 21 without any further notice. So if you're here about that, and you want to be heard, or you want to hear that application, be here next, well, Tuesday, May 21.
All right, did we need to do, do we need to do resolutions?
May 21st.
May 21st.
It'll be first.
Okay, that closes the application portion of the evening. We're going to move back to our resolution portion this evening. Each board member should have received a resolution for Dr. Bradley McAdam, C. O'Kathley Connor, LLC. Are there any questions, comments, or changes for the record? If there are other comments, would anybody like to make that motion to adopt? That's Ms. Akora. Could I have a second? That's Mr. Banga. Could I have a roll call, please? Yes.
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 Thank you, Ms. Probst. The Hidden River Farms is pending. We will move on to our discussion ends for the evening. Mr. Peck, we do have one very important...
Yeah, well, sorry to interrupt. On AR Bridgewater 2, the agreement regarding termination of rights, this just has to do with the continuing saga almost of the, you know, what was once the Center of Excellence that now is the Advanced Realty. The Advance project is moving along nicely, but you still had Center of Excellence had obtained final approval for one phase of their project and preliminary approvals of the other. So you have these approvals still sitting out there, and now you have Advance with their approvals. And there's litigation going on, which is now all being resolved. So this termination of rights is them renouncing and terminating the prior Center of Excellence approvals. So they'll be dead and buried. So we'll just need a vote to authorize execution of the termination of rights. So then that will put the Center of Excellence, you know, finally to bed.
That's Mr. Papas. Ms. Akora, could I have a roll call, please? Yes.
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 Yes, please.
Yes.
And lastly, but not least, Ms. Sarmed, would you like to provide an update on the upcoming master plan public information session on May 22nd? It's taking place. Very good.
Back to back. Back to back to back.
Tuesday, Wednesday. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Right. Yeah. Any other comments from the board? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
That's Ms. Akora. Second.
I second it.
Mr. Chaudry, roll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.